Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, January 22nd, 2007. This evening, City Council will be meeting in a very quick and abbreviated Agenda Special Session, and then into a series of committee meetings. Call to order the Special Session of Athens City Council. We do have a forum with all members present. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0707, an ordinance amending the 2007 appropriation ordinance. Mr. Sands?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move that we consider Ordinance 0707 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
We read this ordinance for the first time last week, and it was pointed out by the mayor and the auditor that we needed to amend the appropriation ordinance we had just passed because there were several, basically typographical errors, errors of omission or overlooking some funds that needed money transferred that didn't get done. And in order for some funds to be expended, for some departments to get their money, we need to pass this as soon as possible.
Motion in the second to consider Ordinance 0707 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion?
I'm sorry. You know where I stand.
Suspense is broken. All those in favor of considering under suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of Ordinance 0707.
Second.
This ordinance has two sections. The first section appropriates $10,000 from the Athens Enhancement Fund to appropriate $10,000 to the Athens Enhancement Fund, and that money would go to community food initiatives for continuation of their work with regards to composting program for the city, for backyard composting education, and for community gardens. Section two deals with the movement of money from certain funds into others. This is, we have been directed by the state auditor to not allow funds from transaction class 600. Mayor, before I mess up, would you explain why we need to move these funds from one transaction fund to another?
The state auditor's in their audit, like, two years ago indicated that rather than using the 600 series of transfers, it's directly transfer from, say, the water department to the general fund for services of the auditor, et cetera, that they would like that as really a payment of services provided, a traditional 300 series item, and therefore it should be that area of the budget. So, at the final stage, I go in and subtract those out and do it, and that's why there was two appropriations tabs and we print the wrong one.
Thank you. Mr. Sands?
I was wondering if we could have, if there are any changes the next time you have a meeting, go over, because we would normally have gone over it, and I think we might have missed that.
Aye.
You know, if there were any increases or decreases in transfers into the internal service fund and such.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, there are three sections to this, just so you know.
There are three sections, I'm sorry.
And most of it's moving from transaction class 600 to the 100, 200, and 300 series. At that time, my confusion was the change between the Community Center Fund, 271, which is being decreased in Section 2, was 172, and the Section 3 transaction went down, and there was a difference about $34,000, but that's reflected actually in the parking garage fund, two parking garage funds below it, the 17 and 16. Just rounding up to real number.
That's where I connected column H instead of column Y to the wrong places, having the parking garage in the other.
Okay.
Small error.
Okay, because I was trying to shift from, you know, I was matching column A with column B, or Section 2 and Section 3, and they didn't line up.
I know.
Okay. The other part I don't understand, of course, is the court system, but I assume that's something we don't have jurisdiction.
Well, yeah, the court set down where they were doing it, and I usually just put that in the final one, because there's no real backup or the court memo, and by using the wrong tab on this one.
Any other questions? We will, I will be more attentive to explaining these things more fully before we are asked to vote on them quickly. And there's actually Section 4, just to, just to, which says, "This ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and move by the mayor."
Okay.
It's quite a complex ordinance, but I think the explanations for the last two weeks, I think, make it clear.
An error is human to really follow up as far as self-rescue. Is there further discussion on Ordinance 0707? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Having no other items on tonight's Special Session agenda, this session is adjourned. We move on now to the Committee of the Whole this evening. Most of the items on this committee's agenda will be chaired by Member Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on our agenda for the Committee of the Whole is Beautification Day of council members. Last year was our first year in doing this, and one of the things we wanted to work towards was doing this on an annual basis. So, the men's water polo, men's water polo club team took this under their wing last year and did an amazing job. They're back here again this year to do it again, and they're also going to be doing this, cheering this under the entire club sports organization. So, they've expanded their end, and they are going to go over with us today their plans for this year's Beautification Day. And with us today, we have Greg and Max.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
We'd like to start by just letting you guys know what exactly we did last year. Max and I have made a slideshow, and we'd like to just go over kind of some fast facts of what happened last year. Go ahead.
My name is Max Laird, I'm a junior here at Ohio University. I was actually on the, not the executive director board for last year, because I was actually out of the country for a little while, but I was able to do some work while I was over there, so that's why I tried to step up this year, and Greg is the executive director. To start off with, Beautification Day last year was a complete success. Mayor Abel came down, he was able to speak for us along with President McDavis. We had 165 volunteers or workers. We had, we got almost $5,000 worth of donation or trade to do all the projects that we did. That is a picture of one of the projects that we had completed. It was just mulching and replating a flower bed there. We had only nine projects last year. What we're really excited about this year is that we're going to be doing, we're going to be attacking this head-on, trying to get at least 15 projects this year and raise almost $10,000. Some of the new projects that we're thinking about doing is contacting people in charge out at Stroud's Run. A lot of students have been utilizing Stroud's Run as a recreation facility, where just laying out or actually going in, and I'm sure it takes, I haven't been out there yet, but I would really like to go out there and check it out and see if we can do a little bit of a litter pickup or whatnot. Last year, we were the water polo team after accomplishing this great day, won the Club Sports Team of the Year. I believe it was the first time that water polo, the men's water polo team had done that, and from what I understand, a lot of the times, the Community Service Fraternity, AFIOL, wins this Community Service Organization of the Year, but we took that as well, and we were very proud of that. It was really, sorry, my computer's on battery settings. It was really spearheaded by Greg's older brother, Mike Jones, who was both the president of the team and the executive director last year for Beautification Day. This does a lot of things for the community. Number one, for me personally, although it's not number one there, is that it brings both the community of Athens and the students of Ohio University together. I think it's very important that we work together to keep the city clean, and I would like to see that continue to happen in the future years. It's very low cost to university. Again, we go out to businesses, local businesses, and try to ask for donations, and what we do as incentives, basically, we have them, they're advertising. In the papers, when we get written up, we have, sometimes they get a mention in there as well. I actually built a website, it is www.ohio.edu/ beautification. I just actually uploaded it today, so it's updated, and I am going to put pictures from last year on there still. It's going to clean up the campus and the surrounding area. There's so much wear and tear by the students and community members on the city. It's a beautiful city in the heart of Appalachia, and it really deserves to be taken care of. This is also a possibility for an annual event. It happened last year, doing it again this year. We're actually, at the moment, working on trying to become an actual organization at Ohio University. Right now is under the Club Sports Organization, which, all the committee members are members of Club Sports, whether on a team or on the Club Sports Executive Committee like Greg is, or just, they work for Club Sports as well. Why are we using Club Sports? Basically, it's just going up the ladder from the water polo team. We really didn't think that as this got bigger, the water polo team would be able to handle all the work that this would really entail, so we wanted to go move up, and Club Sports has been a solid organization through Ohio University for quite some time now, and they're definitely able to handle the task. And hopefully, Beautification Day actually becomes an organization so that it can move up side by side next to Club Sports and be able to run itself. Again, President McDavis, one of his ideals for the university is that we outreach from students to community, and also through the Club Sports Organization, we're able to use a lot of their facilities and equipment that is owned by Ohio University. Who's involved? Obviously, the event organizer right now is Club Sports, Greg and myself, and a number of other very, very capable and, and great workers from Club Sports. I'll show them how to go back there, sorry about that. We get students and any residents who really feel like this is an initiative that they're interested in, come out and help us volunteer. We're looking to get anywhere between 50 and 100 more volunteers this year, because as long as we get the number of projects that we're looking for as well. And this is where we really need the community's support and help by finding these projects, because a lot of times, we may not know what's going on in Athens community that could be bothering a lot of residents here. The local businesses, again, are going to be our source of sponsors and funding, and if there's any type of grants or anything through the city, or county for that matter, that might be able to help us out, we would very much welcome that as well.
All right. Now, current status of the project. I don't know if many of you guys remember, last year, we only had five, five students on the committee, on the executive board. This year, we've gone up to 14, Max and I, and 12 other students who participate in Club Sports. We have two people working on sponsorship, two people working on, one person working on media relations, two treasurers, two people working with recruitment and finding projects, and, you know, so everything's divvied up, so it's now, it's not just on five people, it's on 14 people. So, the stress is a lot less, it's a lot easier, we all work together really well. As the contact, we've made contact with Athens City Council today, we have the meeting with you guys, and today, we're going to try to request projects, see what you guys think we should do. Right now, we only have about six or seven, they're duplicates from last year, and we'd like to see what you guys would like us to do. We're looking for support from Student Senate. This coming Friday at 11 o'clock, we have a meeting with President McDavis in his office, and as Max said, he has now updated the website. Our media relations guy has contacts with the senator, he has contacts with Columbus and Cincinnati and areas around Ohio. They're going to come and try to see if they can get us on TV, get us in newspapers, get this word out, because, you know, this is kind of a big deal. And then sponsorship packets have been formed, and they'll be distributed as soon as we meet with the president this coming Friday. And the next, next thing is the plan. Last year was awesome, it was a huge success, but we feel it was a little bit too small. We want to make it a little bit bigger. So, we're going to base everything off of last year's successes. We want to establish credibility and legitimacy, we want approval from the city government, and also from the president's office. Major sponsors, we're going to, we're probably going to distribute a sponsorship package to every single small business and large business. We actually would like to go after the smaller businesses, because they kind of run the city. Kroger, Walmart, you know, they're big businesses, but I like going to Uptown Dogs, I like going to the local businesses who kind of like, they form and build character in the city. Recruiting volunteers through Club Sports and other organizations, and then also delegating projects.
All right. Basically, we have some projects in mind. Again, this is really just asking the city for its help here. We're doing everything else that we possibly can to get this on, on the show, or show on the road, I guess, and we're going to be doing mulching, planting flowers again. I also, this year, plan on holding a camp food drive at the site of the event, the main site where we have the speakers and we meet first before going off, where every volunteer brings at least two cans of food and donate to Good Works. We're also looking at trying to see if any of the local nonprofit organizations also need projects done as well. The Red Cross, for instance, maybe their facility needs some work on the outside or the inside, painting, mulching, landscaping, whatever, or even just basic litter pickup. Again, Stroud's Run, like I said before, I think is, is a great attraction for future students and residents, as long as it's kept up, obviously. This is what we have right now. Last year, we took graffiti off of the parking garage across the street, the OU entrances were cleaned up. I actually had the job of distributing the education packets. What I did with this was I acquired recycling information, trash pickup information, put them in bags, and went door-to-door through the student housing community, giving it to them, say, you know, let's, let's start recycling, start taking care of the city, this is the first step, you can only do it individually, and then move up as a group from there. We want to get more churches and schools. A beautiful place to live is a very important thing. It really does something for a positive mindset as well. And again, the local nonprofit organizations. How does it benefit you guys? You get to, we would love to have you guys there on, on the day of the event as well. Give you guys personal exposure as, as well as exposure for the city council in itself. One more great thing that you guys can do for the city of Athens. And we just, again, we're just really asking for your support in this, so we can keep that bond strong between OU and the city, and community service is always a great thing to do. That's basically what we have for you. We're ready for any questions you may have.
Just a quick, first, before you guys ask questions, what are the dates? I know you guys have.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
The date is going to be April 14th, with a rain date scheduled for April 21st.
And what time do you guys get started?
Last year, I believe it started at 9 o'clock.
9:00 AM?
Yeah. That way, I mean, we're able to work early in the day rather than running into the 3 or 4 o'clock heat, or even before that.
Yeah. The way it works last year is we had kind of like a pre-party. We had every student come in, get your T-shirt, meet your, meet your, what you call, not representative, but like your supervisor of that specific project. You guys would hang out, food was donated from Kroger, bagels, juice, bananas, apples, like, you know, all this breakfast food. You eat, you hang out, speeches were made by the mayor and also by the president of the university, and then you go to your project. You go to your project, couple hours, between two and five hours, we spend out there, and then there's actually a post-party. Come back. Pigskin donated food, we had, you know, pop, chips, you know, pulled pork, you know, food, everybody ate dinner, and kind of like a wrap-up, and then cleanup. We were done by what, 7 o'clock?
Yeah, after cleaning up. It was mainly the water polo team who stayed around to clean up with a select few others.
Right.
But it was definitely worth it, though.
That's the day in a nutshell.
A member, Bishop?
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, I think this is a wonderful project, and I congratulate you and appreciate your work on this. I have a challenge for you, though.
Okay.
The uptown area, some of the stores, the bars, cigarette butts, dirt, filthy windows, excuse me, if you could actually work somehow, maybe on either getting the businesses to kind of step up to the plate that day, or work with them, that would be really wonderful to do a little facelift on, on uptown.
Especially after the new smoking ordinance went to effect.
Right.
You have so many cigarettes, cigarette butts on the, on the street.
Yeah, and, yes.
It could be one of the incentives we have for the sponsors. Hey, we'll come clean your windows on the outside if you help us, give us some money to do it, and run this project.
That would be fabulous.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Okay. Debbie?
One thought that I had when you mentioned Stroud's Run is if folks are interested in that, getting in touch with John Nouse, and if there's a crew that wanted to do trail maintenance, whether it's at Stroud's or at Sal's Park, if there's a group that wanted to do that kind of.
What was it, Sal's Park?
Sal's Park, there's a whole system of trails that now connects one of the city parks out to Stroud's Run, and we've got a person who has worked with volunteer groups who do trail maintenance, so if there's a group that's interested in that.
What's the name?
John Nouse.
Yeah, Debbie, I'm glad that you bring that up. I talked to them when we met a couple weeks ago, or week ago, about getting in touch with John. He was actually here earlier, I thought. Hopefully, he'll be coming back, so we'll get you in touch with John.
Yeah, definitely, that, that'll be a great idea for another project. Hopefully, we get good weather on this day as well, so we can, I mean, hike through the woods if they really want to.
And actually, our Ohio University crew team, who actually practices out in Stroud's Run, they're totally about cleaning that place up, because that's their, like, recreation field, so they're all, there's 50, 50 students there that want to actually contribute to that, so.
Remember, Wile?
So, if we come, coming up with projects right now may be more difficult off the top of our head. If we want to contact you through the website, I assume, is that how it gets done?
Yes. Well, I've got links for email to both Greg, myself, the sponsorship coordinator, the media inquiry coordinator, and also the volunteer coordinator on there as well. But you're more than welcome, I can give you our email right now.
No, that's okay, I'll, I'll track it down this way. The other question I had is, I know you were working on graffiti last year, and you had variable success cleaning it off. Have, have you found different techniques, or are you going to try different?
Yeah, we have to do some testing with that. The problem was, we found some products that would work, but we were afraid that if you put it on the wall, it's going to take the paint off that's supposed to be there. We had a power washer last year, actually, I remember Greg Warner, the Ohio University varsity swim coach, sitting there spraying down the wall next to West Elementary School, that church that kind of got graffiti all over it, spraying it down, it was, it was great. Like, we have that idea, but we also, we think we can do a little better. So, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to actually be testing different products, seeing what works best without ruining the actual building or the paint that's supposed to be there.
Okay. I just wondered.
Yeah, there was some problems. I didn't, I wasn't working on that project myself, but from what I heard, there were some problems with, oh, it wasn't coming off, or it was only doing just a little bit of the job that really needs to be done. But we're going to be doing a little bit more work this year on the graffiti removal to make sure that it actually gets taken care of.
Actually, this is just something to kind of think about.
Okay.
Because all this good work goes into this, and I was thinking, I was in the parking garage, and, you know, it's kind of like, keep it clean. You know, in other words, maybe eventually, you want to think of some way to maybe get this ethic, you know, kind of ingrained in people, and maybe there's kind of a keep-it-clean campaign at some point. But, but I think this project is super, but that's just something to think about for the future.
In a way, I do see it as a campaign like that.
Yeah.
You just got to drill it in their heads, like you said, and hopefully, kids will, this type of job will be transferred upon students at a younger age. Maybe it goes from us to maybe some, something at Athens High School, or something at Athens Middle School, or so on and so forth, where the kids start getting involved. And really, in my opinion, I think Ohio University needs to start setting example as well. They do, do a lot to recycle paper and beverage cans. You see all the little trash cans, like, four different trash cans in each classroom for waste, recyclables, paper, whatnot, and so forth. But, but when, from what I've heard, keeping the lights on at Pedan takes up more energy than keeping every single light on in every single dorm for the day. So, that's just one part. Also, when I was living over in Europe, they, they were building the new National Assembly Building for Wales, and it was almost 100% green efficient. They were collecting the rainwater and washing the windows and toilets with it. They had a biomass boiler where all of the driftwood that came into the bay that year got chopped up and heated that building the whole year. They had a natural air conditioning system called a wind cow that rotated with the air and cooled the building naturally. That type of thing cuts down so much on energy, it's, it's incredible. But when, as much as I'm happy to see that we have a nice, brand-new student center on campus, I would have liked to see something like that going too as well. And what I hope is that in future years, when they build more facilities, they'll institute that as well.
Paul?
In terms of last year, I know you put a budget together. How did you, did you break even? Did you come out on top?
We, we have $500 left in the account.
Okay.
Any other questions or suggestions? If we do have anything further, then we'll just go ahead and contact you through the website.
Through the website, or you have our information as well.
Right out, or I'll supply, yeah, counsel with your contact information. Great, thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for doing it last year, it was good.
Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next, we have, last week, you'll remember, some students were here to present to us just their thoughts and views on the fencing of Halloween, and this week, under Committee of the Whole, Student Senate asked that they come and present to council, just as a formal explanation of where they stand on the fencing. So, if Student Senate would like to come up to the podium. I'm going to pass out, this was given to me, copies for everybody, this is the official resolution opposing the proposal to fence-in and charge admission in the 2007 Athens Halloween celebration.
Okay, everybody, good evening. My name is Tim Vonville, I'm the Off-Campus Life Director for the Ohio University Student Senate. We're coming out tonight to speak out against the proposal to fence-in and charge admission to next year's Halloween. Many of the individuals you see sitting in the audience are coming here in support of what I have to say and oppose the plan. I'd like to say that the Ohio University Student Senate greatly appreciates this opportunity to come and speak to the city council. This past Wednesday, the Senate unanimously passed Resolution 0607-21, a resolution opposing portions of the city ordinance 0-04-03. Specifically, we have many concerns regarding the potential of a fence constructed around the Court, around Court Street, and the charging of admission for the 2007 Halloween celebration. I would first like to address questions that arise regarding safety. One of the main components of the argument supporting the creation of a fence is to ensure the well-being of all members of the public. The ordinance directly asserts that the city of Athens should "call for the use of fencing to create a defined area to protect public health and safety." While this may be lined with good intentions, I ask you to consider probable consequences directly relating to safety. If the city constructs a fence, they will only push the celebration to every side street in Athens. The atmosphere of most recent Halloween block parties has been relatively calm, with little disturbance, under current enforcement and security measures. But the city can throw away any sense of that if the party moves to the surrounding roads and streets. These unregulated parties may serve as the most cumbersome safety concern for the city. Although the Senate would never condone such behavior as unruly parties, we must be realistic. In addition, the Halloween party in Madison, Wisconsin, which has served as the case study of Athens, reportedly experienced similar behavior. After speaking, after speaking with the Associated Students of Madison, it seems as if those who regularly attended their own celebration moved it to the surrounding neighborhoods. This all came about as a response to the creation of a fence and the charging of admission. If safety is such a large concern, shouldn't the city apply it to every area and every city, citizen during Halloween? Furthermore, it seems as little has been done to seek out viable alternatives to the fence and the charging of admission. As a senate, we have discussed many charging of admission. As a senate, we have discussed many options to offset the burdensome costs placed upon the Athens taxpayer. These can perhaps be as simple as 50/50 raffles, the introduction of donations and volunteer opportunities, or having a paid costume contest. And since the city seems so willing to invest into the idea and expense of a fence and the additional cost of enforcement, why hasn't the option of investing in a well-known act or attraction been given much thought? If we work together as a community, I am positive that we will make a self-sustaining Halloween. It just may take some time, cooperation, and investment. Finally, much of the apprehension from the student body regarding the proposed major stems from the tumultuous amount of unanswered questions. On top of these issues already addressed, representatives in the city have been given several times to address the concerns, but has failed. We still are wondering why viable options have yet to be researched, what type of impact this will have on Congress, why the city is willing to turn over jurisdiction of the fence to the Athens Police Department, and also questions over legality. I implore the city council, address these questions of utmost concern before approving a burdensome and potentially hazardous plan. If passed, the charging of admission and fencing of the 2007 Halloween celebration will do more harm than good. I also have another member of the Student Senate that would like to speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Estock. I am the city and county commissioner for Student Senate. I'm just going to follow Tim with a few more concerns. Mine are a bit more specific, but some things that Student Senate, along with other students, have discussed and I would like to bring to members of city council. What I'm about to say might seem a bit irrelevant, but I do have a point. So first off, I'm not sure if you're very familiar with freedom of association, but it is a constitutional concept that gives the rights for, right to free adults to mutually choose their associates for whatever purpose they see fit. By identifying ourselves as expressive associates, meaning we share a very informal and friendly relationship with each other, we also have the right to freely assemble, specifically in regard to this case, into apartments, stores, and bars that are located on Court Street. This right should be exercised without limitations imposed by the city, namely a $5 admission fee. We understand that the street is city property, and you may do with it what you please. However, we feel that you cannot hold apartments and businesses hostage and demand a ransom for their right to entry. This point is made mainly to critique the way you go about charging non-residents, or not charging residents of Court Street, but then charging guests who wish to access their apartments that night without taking part in the street party. As far as the ease of accessibility on the street, the students are very concerned with the eight-foot fence serving as an obstacle for ambulance and police cruisers to gain entry to the enclosed area if an emergency were to arise. We feel in order to effectively monitor the flow of payers and non-payers coming and going, the gateway of entry should be limited and small. This is not practical if we must also ensure the ease of entry for safety vehicles. Lastly, and this, I really hope that you can show some compassion toward this next concern, because as a woman, and many of the other women on Student Senate and other students felt the same way, but we all know that some surrounding areas and alleyways and streets of Athens are not very well lit. And when I want to, I'm a resident of Mill Street, and when I have friends on, say, Schaefer Street, which is a clear distance across the city, when I would like to go from point A to point B, I would usually take Court Street because it's very well lit, and I feel very safe taking that route. When you put up an eight-foot fence in this area, it's going to be very difficult for me to navigate around and find a safe route to where I want to get to. So I feel, being a student council, or a city council member, you should ensure the safety of your citizens, especially women, on a night like Halloween. I just think that an eight-foot fence is not, is not the best idea for, you know, providing a sense of safety for these other students who don't wish to take part in this, in the street party, but, you know, would like to escape from, you know, their homes on that night. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay. Thank you. Bojenka?
Let's see. Now, I am new to city council, as most of you know. And I haven't had the long history of being really kind of tired and fed up with Halloween yet. And so I want to kind of look at this situation as an opportunity. And I really do, actually. I think the kind of interest and intention that the students are giving to this is really important. And I'm really glad you're doing it. And actually, I have a class that's looking into a plan to see if there could be an event that could be financially self-sustaining and still safe, okay, without a fence. And so I think the more groups that kind of work on this and say, here's a viable option, the better. And so, you know, and I don't know what's going to happen this year, because obviously, you know, the whole city council has to vote on it. But I would encourage you to actually come up with a, an actual, you know, event plan that says, you know, here's the income, here's what it would take to manage it, and work on it that way. Because I, as I say, I am, I think it's possible to have a solution, and I would like to see the solution. But that's just me.
Just in response to that, Bojenka, I know that in meeting with Student Senate that we have discussed that, I mean, I understand that they're, you know, adamantly opposed to the fence, but they're also certainly exploring, or at least trying to explore other solutions.
Great.
And helping collaborate with the city in this event.
Yeah, excellent. And, you know, put some, put some figures to it, some budget, some events, and be realistic about what it might take to manage it. And I think that would be, that would be a good project.
Anyone else from council? Member Wile?
Having sat here for a long time, not here, but also there, I understand why you'd be leery of a fence. My point of view is trying to recoup the cost. At $70,000 to $80,000, depending on which numbers you use, that's a lot of money. We're going to be talking about a slip at the Trans Amis Committee for about $80,000. That's one slip on Mulligan that can be fixed with this money that we don't have because we spent it on Halloween. Looking at Stewart Street sidewalks, if we were to cut, foot, 90% of the bill for the street sidewalk we want replaced there, we're talking about 37. That's half a Halloween. So we start, start cutting it in pieces like that. We start looking at the price of a policeman and how many pieces of a Halloween that is. To recoup the cost is what I want to look at. I like Halloween. I've been in costumes. I go up when I have a good costume, usually, if I find something imaginative. But I understand, now that I'm sitting up here, I also have a responsibility to make sure that we don't lose money on one bad weekend. If this was a flood, we'd want to prevent the flood from happening. There's nothing that says we should have a Halloween. There's nothing that says we have to have Halloween. The assumption is we can't kill Halloween. That's an assumption. We're, I'm aware of the fact that we did pass, the state of Ohio did pass something about riots and students losing their financial aid as a result of riots. Taking over the street could constitute a riot. We sanction these things. We try making them as safe as possible because that's the city's responsibility. But it is a cost. It's a cost for one weekend. I don't know, it's more than I make in a year. It's more than I know many of my friends make in a year. I'm coming with a low role bunch of people. But at the same time, this is one weekend that we burn out like this. I've gone on the safety teams and they bond on this stuff. They sit there and it, it's like you're packing sandbags for a flood. That's the type of bonding you're seeing with the city employees. They're trying to make it as best possible. This is just another solution from my point of, or way to recoup it. We've tried charging the vendors. We've discussed sales for the liquor, to find out we can't do that. We've talked about all the other possibilities. We've had committees. What is it, 98, was it, Clean and Safe Report? And that's just one of them. Again, I'm willing to try a fence just because it's another attempt. If you can come up with a better plan, this will be here this year, probably next year, we'll try something different. And that's it. It could be a good solution, could be a bad solution, as you say. The parties out in the neighborhoods, you know, they don't get, you know, it's unsafe. It's not as safe. We have everybody in town. We have everybody uptown. All the police are running around trying to make it uptown and safe. So, you know, there is an inadequacy up in neighborhoods. The concept of having a ban, a name ban come, well, that's a double-edged sword there. Suppose we get, you know, you know, bring on fish, or bring on somebody, and see if we get 100,000 people. Is that a success? I know, I know there are cities that have nixed Halloween. They've just squashed it hard. That's a tentative possibility, too. So as I say, I've watched the solutions come and go, or the attempts at it, but we still seem to have Halloween. And it seems to be costing the city a chunk of money. And the university, it's your money, too. Your tuition's going to it.
Member Bishop?
Okay. Can I just say that, that one thing that I think is different, I'm going to look on the positive side, that this is the first time that the student body has taken an active role in planning it. I mean, I know you all have a lot of history, and yes, it costs money. Lots of things cost money. But, but I think this is the first time that the students themselves, who essentially populate the party primarily, are kind of taking some interest and maybe, in a sense, some responsibility. So I would, I'm interested in seeing what, what people can come up with, frankly.
Carol?
I agree with everyone. How's that? I certainly think that there are possibilities that students could put together some constructive plans. These gentlemen have come to us with a plan. One year ago, in January.
That's right.
They came to us for the first time, and by May, had a viable, good project. It paid for itself and created a wonderful service for our community. Last May, we voted down or decided not to bring forward the idea of a fence, to give the students the opportunity to put together something. It's seven months later, and we don't have anything specific. I'm not finished.
Sorry.
Could they have? I believe they could have. They haven't. I don't quite understand what motivation there is for a miracle of planning if we don't do something on our own to recoup our costs and to do something about Halloween. If we had a fence and the students continued to plan good, strong events for within the fence, and those events actually realized any money, then it might be that the fence wouldn't be necessary again, that we would be on the road to sustainability. That's the dilemma. If we don't do anything, there is no motivation for anybody else to do anything. It's our responsibility to pay for this event, one way or the other.
Anyone else? Debbie?
I would just mention, I attended a meeting of the Athens Uptown Business Association a couple of weeks ago. And the representative from the Convention and Visitors Bureau made a really interesting comment, that part of it is how we choose to look at these different events, and that there are cities who would be really excited and pleased to have an event that drew this many people to the city, and look at it as a tourism opportunity, and that we don't talk about other events in the same way. We don't talk about the cost to the city of homecoming with closing the street and having extra security, and that there's, there's some difference in the ways we choose to talk about different events that bring a lot of people here and have a big impact on city services.
That's a good point. Paul?
I think homecoming requires a parade permit, and actually, not an ordinance for us to close the street. I think that's the main difference I see with this. I'm not entirely happy with homecoming either. It looks like there are way too many drunks in the AM. So, which is why I don't go on the parades anymore. I'm tired of dodging the...
How old are you now?
What?
How old are you now?
I'm tired of dodging the Nerf footballs and the frisbees. But, you know, there are differences on that, daytime and nighttime, and the attitude. They're not in costume, at least not all in costume.
Bill?
With great hesitancy that I do this. In '89, the first time I ever ran for council, it was to organize and control Halloween. Tell you how successful I've been in my tenure in politics. I would disagree with our good friend Bojenka. There have been many, many times that student groups have become very involved in the planning and trying to do many different things with Halloween. Over the years, I have seen fraternities out there at three o'clock in the morning sweeping up trash out of the street.
Yes.
And receiving no appreciation for it. I've seen many, many people try to do different things with Halloween over the years.
Yeah.
The idea of the fence has been mentioned since '89. I remember a group of us went to Key West a number of years ago to see how Fantasy Fest, a huge Halloween was ran, and we came back with all kinds of exciting ideas of how we could trademark ideas and earn money back that way. The law director had lots of different issues with us on doing it the same way that, for whatever reason, they were able to do it in Florida, and copyright certain insignias, and restrict, you know, T-shirts, and that kind of thing. I saw the Cancer Society selling margaritas on Duval Street down there and making a fortune. I remember a little old ladies' garden club one time saying, "We've got our whole used budget here." Selling drinks right on the street. Well, they wouldn't let us do that either, unfortunately. We went to Galveston Island a number of years ago, and that's when I really started pushing the idea for a fence, in the sense that that was a community that during the winter had nothing going on at Christmas, and they fenced off a whole area. In summer, they had a huge tourism thing, but in winter, it absolutely dried up, and the town desperately needed some help then. And they came up with the idea of a Dicksonian Christmas. And if you showed up in costume, you got in for free, but if you didn't, you had to pay $10. And it was so packed, you could barely, barely get up and down the street and into the stores and all that kind of stuff. But the fence worked there. I don't think you can sell, the one thing I learned from Halloween, because when I got involved in it, what amounted to back then, it was an illegal street takeover. We had the city administration and all the police out there, "You step out in the street, we will arrest you." And, you know, lots of people got arrested, and anything that we decided back then that started with an illegal street takeover, didn't improve much during the night. It was really a hell's night. It was more than a little bit scary. Kind of intriguing, but a little bit scary. I don't think you can sell a fence to people that don't want it, and it's their party. I just really don't think you're going to do much than set up a problem that's going to...
Then I think that we should work towards closing it down. I don't think we should close the street. You know, it's our city.
Mm-hmm.
Whose party is it? You know?
Bojenka?
May I just address, and I appreciate that people have worked on this for a long time, and many splinter groups. And I want to say that I think maybe, one of, no one has approached this as planning an event. I mean, there are lots of big events, and people mention some of them. There are big art fairs, there's that Columbus Fest. There are many, many public events that are managed and planned. And I think, but I don't know, that people have had a piece of it, but no one has approached it and said, you know, how, what manpower does it take to plan and manage this event, and what does it cost? That's all. And I, and I think that it is conceivable that it could be a positive attraction. That's all. But let's just see what people in, if they're looking at it holistically for planning a public event that could be safe and fun, you know, what, what can people come up with? So...
Are there any other comments from council, if not try and wrap up this item? Because we do have one thing under miscellaneous. Anybody want to say anything else? Okay. The one miscellaneous item comes from the mayor, involving the disbanding of the Community Design Committee, to which I'll ask him to speak to.
Thank you. I received a letter earlier this month from the Community Design Committee to let me know that it was disbanding. Community Design was formed back many years ago when we had a tax incentive, finance... when we had a tax incentive financing program for upstairs and uptown, rather. And they were the committee that reviewed the plans, and without their approval, really, the city wouldn't consider for tax abatement the improvements that someone was made. And the idea was to have that under some logical progression and plan. That tax abatement, as you know, ended last year. Council's formally taken that off the books, primarily because the state of Ohio won't let us do it any longer. So with that, you know, primary mission gone, they're opting to disband. I think they were referenced many times within our council ordinances, et cetera, for whether or not they're actually were created by us. We aren't there. I'm not appointing them, and neither is council, so it's sort of self-perpetuating. But I think that there's, the other side of that is that they also have a balance of funds on hand. I don't know exactly how they got the funds, whether that was from a bonus fund or something from the city, whatever, about fifty-eight hundred dollars, which they wish to have this earmarked to be used toward the purchase of additional or replacement trash receptacles or replacement liners in the uptown area. And they want direction as to how to disperse that to us. So in any ordinance that council might do to commending them for their years of service over many members, direct that to go into the sanitation fund, and I talked to the auditor, they have seen, find some kind of coding on that revenue sign that would then have that go toward the purposes of their intent. I might suggest in a letter to them that they might also want to consider the street lighting project upstairs, uptown, where the building lights are about thirteen years old and the useful life of ten, so they're not in good shape. That wouldn't cover this cost, but it would probably cover twenty-five to forty percent of it. So I'll let them describe what they want it to go to, but we just have to have a methodology to get it on, otherwise it goes into the general fund. And that's not their intent.
Paul?
So, sounds like a good idea. If they're going to disband, they take the money and put it into trash containers. How about ashtrays, too, for uptown?
I'd suggest that, too.
Okay. The lighting would work, too, I guess.
Yeah.
Bujinka?
I was going to say, I wish there were a role for them in terms of kind of, you know, design specs or something, kind of consistency of design. But also, you know, maybe some interesting and nice-looking bike racks. There are some very attractive bike racks that look like bikes. They're very cute. Dress up uptown.
Debbie?
At that same AUBA meeting that I attended, there was some discussion about this, and it's, I think there were some members of AUBA who were interested in trying to get involved with community design. So I guess I'd want to check with them and see what they're trying to do, if they've communicated with the current members.
Right. Their role was, the only hook they had to help, you know, people to come along with there was the tax abatement. That's gone. Now, the other things, as I know, there was a number of areas in the comprehensive plan that people talked about, design standards, they talked about areas that you could then put a design board in conjunction with zoning and planning. And I think if we, the city and council approve such a thing, we might want a similar body such as this to exist for the uptown area.
In that discussion, they were talking about the possibility of raising some private funds to help continue the activity. So it was some new blood. They were interested in getting involved. And I think that Rick Wasserman is one of the people, and Leslie Schaller, who had expressed interest. I could check with Leslie and just, you know, maybe CC an email to you about what they were thinking, just to explore it before we bring it forward. Okay. Anybody else?
It's not our decision if they disband.
Yeah.
Apparently, there's one more miscellaneous item from Councilmember Bain.
Okay. It's eight, almost eight o'clock. I was wondering if, I'm going to use one minute exactly. I was wondering if you could, on behalf of the rest of council, if there are an agreement, write to the law director and ask him about licensing bicycles for once in parole, so we get a decision on whether that's permitted, because it's come up again. Whether or not we are permitted to license bicycles, not whether we should or not, just whether we are. Thank you. Only use thirty seconds.
Anything under miscellaneous? Okay, this committee is adjourned, and transportation committee will now meet. First thing on the agenda is the Stewart Street sidewalk. We'll give a minute for the room to clear out.
Yeah, and I have a small... It won't take more than a minute.
You get thirty seconds.
They get fifty-five, and I get thirty seconds. It's not fair, man. Fair, yes. I spent the morning driving around, trying to find examples. On Stewart Street, trying to find examples, but I could not get all the pictures on it. So I just wanted to kind of think about what we might do when we're redeveloping sidewalks. So I brought some pictures along, thinking they spoke a thousand words. So if he can get those rolling. I just could not...
More like these first, is that what?
Yeah. How are you doing, Scott?
I could have sent you some more if you needed.
You could have sent me some more. Well, I only got my hard drive. I think it's rolling to pieces. What are these pictures of? Sidewalks? When we talk about redevelopment of sidewalks, I think it's a different operation from a new subdivision. And so I have a couple of examples that might pertain to Stewart Street.
Possible.
Possible.
We'll be the judge of that.
Yes, we will.
I imagine, such a harsh group. Scott, what's going on?
Okay, well, does council remember that I sent everybody an email some time ago, maybe a week or so, about Stewart Street? I had met with Andy and Ray on the specifics. What you have in front of you, what I gave to you is a packet of information. The thing on top is the site plan, and you'll see the specific properties on which we will be constructing sidewalk in front of, should this get through. And then also, I've included an email correspondence that I shared on whether or not we would do assessment and the procedure we would need to go through in order to assess property owners, should that be the decision that we make on this specific project. And then also, I provided some code on the power to levy and collect special assessments. Again, that's something that we want to do. The very last page in the packet provides information on the total cost of the project as put forth, and came from survey and design from the street department. And you'll see that the numbers there, we're dealing with four property owners. And next to the property owners, you'll see is the percentage of the total project in which will be affecting their property. And then there's a breakdown of percentages. Should the city decide to assess the property owners on what kind of a number, percentage, we would want to assess? Should that be what we decide to do? Bujinka?
Is this assessing for the building of it rather than the repair?
Is this for the construction of the sidewalk?
Construction.
Yeah, this is for new sidewalks.
And is assessing people for new construction something new?
Well, when I sent out that email to council and discussed it with city administration, two projects that happened recently were Ohio Avenue and the middle school project, both of which were handled differently. From what I understand, the Ohio Avenue wasn't assessed at all. Neither was the middle school project, but it was built. Is that correct? On the middle school project sidewalks?
It was built, and most of it has been paid.
Right, yeah, most of that has been. I think Andy told me seventy percent of that has come back to the city.
Seventy percent of that from individual homeowners?
Property owners.
Property owners.
Those were replacements, though.
Oh, replacements. Okay.
That's the difference between the two projects.
Ohio Avenue was newly constructed sidewalk. There was no sidewalk there to begin with.
And there was no assessment to residents?
On Ohio Avenue?
Correct. Is that...
No, it's not, and it's not to residents, it's to property owners. I want to make sure that's clear.
Okay, yeah, yeah, property owners. But the point is, there was no assessment on Ohio Avenue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so this would be a new...
This is new construction.
But it would also be a new way of paying for the sidewalk. We would be assessing property owners?
I'm sure the city at some point has assessed property owners.
You're catching on to why veto both of those ordinances on Ohio Avenue, because I objected to council doing it for free.
Okay, because I know that property owners have to pay for repairs.
And now, you know, when there's new, when there are new subdivisions, they're required to build sidewalks. And I think that there are a variety of ways that cities deal with sidewalks. So just because we did one one way, I don't think means that we're locked into that forever.
Right, but I just wanted to understand that this would be something new, if it is.
Historically and traditionally, the property owners have always been assessed the cost.
Of building a new sidewalk?
Where one existed, right?
No, that's repair.
No, not necessarily. In fact, the mayor, that was, let's rub some call this one. Remember, we had the debate over, we wanted a sidewalk added to Lincoln because it was going to the library. And it was not really running on a much-used street. But not used, at least in council's opinion, by the people in front of it. It was really running along people's side yards for the most part. So council disagreed with the administration and asked the ordinance over the veto. But that was a break in the traditional way, my understanding, of how Athens has always handled sidewalks. The city pays for the curb, the property owner pays for the sidewalk.
And an existing sidewalk.
And an existing, and I always thought any new...
That's different.
But wait a second.
Replacement.
Replacement is different.
Well, see, the thing is, we get into this argument, we never do it. I mean, that's, it takes years to get anything done.
Never do what?
Get them done.
I'm really glad that sidewalk's there on Lincoln.
So am I.
Paul?
You're what about Lincoln?
I'm really glad it's there. Lots of people use it.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think that's the case with Stewart Street as well.
On that one, who, what we're talking about is who's a fair to pay for.
Exactly.
We also did one in front of, on Link, not Lincoln Street, but Home Street, is it? Home Street, the whole link, and it's on the wrong side. We did it at our expense. Okay.
At our expense. Okay, that's what I want to know.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
In terms of sidewalks, though, any new subdivision, the homeowner is eventually paying for it right then and there, because it's going to be as part of the value of the lot, okay? And that's new sidewalk.
I guess, you know, and I use this in class sometimes because the next two slides are great contrast. But you can see we have relatively limited space. And the one other thing that I think is important to note...
Because it's Stewart, right?
The left side of the screen would be where we would...
Oh, building a new one on the left.
This is Stewart Street, yes. Yes, and if you've ever been down Stewart Street, you'll see that there's a beaten path in the grass from where people use that street every single day.
Yeah, I followed a woman who was going, but she crossed the street when she got to the unshovelled sidewalk. This one was taken before the snow. And the one thing I wanted to emphasize from my point of view as a tree hugger, I wanted to make sure that we did not cut down those trees. Now, show the next slide, Scott, please. This is why, I mean, just look at that street. Oh, there it is. You can see the path. It's not very wide.
Well, there's a sidewalk right there.
Yeah, but it stops.
That stops.
I know, I know.
It's from that place on, so that's what we want to do, right?
Right, well, if you'll look at the site plans, yes.
No, no, I know. I just wanted to verify, I mean, so a picture is worth a thousand words.
Right, I understand, yes.
I'm trying to go fast. Okay, let's go.
And Nancy, on the tree hugger part, we, Andy is in communication with the tree commission and what, you know, if we do, if we are going to have to cut down trees, of, you know, how they feel. But we're not going to have to.
Okay, let's go. Show a couple more. All right, now, take a look, and as you see the difference between the two, that's why we need to put the sidewalk in with the aprons. Okay, let's keep going.
I think we need the curb.
Okay, so I went over to the OUN area, and this is the sidewalk they put in, not OUN, but OU area. God, I shouldn't say that one, I guess.
OU what?
OU by the athletic fields, and that's my faithful yellow yardstick, and that's the size of sidewalk that's there on that wide, yes? Four feet, that's about four feet, yeah. And I don't know if we need one quite that wide, so let's go on to the next one. I just wanted to give you, you can go fast. Now that you've got it working, it's great. Let's go fast, faster, faster. Okay, this is the other way, and this is one of my other gripes. If we're a walking city, what the hell's going to happen to the walkers with this particular situation? Okay, keep going. Those were both on Mill Street. The slippery part was uphill side, so you could be sure to fall on your fanny on your way down the hill. Let's go. Okay, so this is, the other side is Stewart Street. This is the Cody property on the corner, one of those big new ones. And you can see it's not much wider than, the dirty part is the street, and it's about a thirty-six inch sidewalk that was done fairly recently.
And I see the snow's been removed quite nicely.
Yeah, I know. In a better world, we'd see that happen. Maybe the guy who put it there has taken it back by now. Okay, there it is again. You can see the reference point with my yellow yardstick.
Forty-eight inches, what you need for a wheelchair.
Well, yeah, okay. And here's the arch type, and then my computer started acting flunky, but this...
Okay, so this is Lincoln, right here?
This is Lincoln Street, and this is where the sidewalk goes around the tree. And I think the next slide is actually the one that should be in front of it, but I lost it. Okay, I'm done. All right.
What was the question about wheelchairs? How wide?
Forty-eight inches is what you really need to have.
Okay, I just spent a lot of time doing this.
Well, that's what this is, this is four feet. These are four feet sidewalks. That's forty-eight.
We could probably narrow them a bit.
You can't, well, for anyone to be able to get around, they have to step off. If you do, thirty-two inches is a standard wheelchair width.
Well, you're saying forty-eight for someone to pass?
We're not talking about a seventy-six trombones situation here. We're talking about two people walking down the street, and I drive Lincoln, I drive whatever that street is that we're putting the sidewalk on. I drive it three or four times a day. I've never seen a wheelchair on it. Not that we shouldn't provide them.
Well, if it's inaccessible to even walk down, then who would want to wheel their wheelchair down?
Thirty-two, yeah, thirty-two inches will cover it, the way you see.
Yeah.
Well, I did show you pictures, and we just wanted to see the vicinity and how it looks right now.
Great, thank you. Bujinka?
I was going to say, I think it should be wheelchair operational. Yeah, it has to be. Okay, very good.
Well, why are you, why do you think that we should make it more narrow than the four feet?
I'm afraid it's going to be right up to the front porches, and I think people right now cross the street right when the sidewalk disappears.
Right.
Maybe they would go back, but I think that the natural flow of traffic is up the hill.
Do we own the right of way that wide? We do.
It took a year to get that, but we do own it.
I think wide sidewalks make a much nicer-looking city. Little skinny sidewalks look very chintzy and bad.
Except they're going to be right up to the people's porch. I mean, which is going to be a problem, which is why it's taken us two years to get this far. I just want to make sure everyone knows what we're doing.
Well, can you make it forty inches?
Yeah.
Does it have to be feet?
What is she saying?
Bad things about me.
I don't care about that. What is going on? That's the last time I spend my money.
All I said is to take a look at the need to have the grass mowed.
Great photography.
Oh, it's very useful.
And the yardstick, if I ever need one.
It's in my car, and I...
Well, yeah, and Nancy brings up a very important point. I mean, how long has council been trying to get sidewalks put in down on Stewart Street? Far before I ever became on council. So the important thing right now is that we need to keep moving on this project. So council needs to decide what we want to do. Does the city want to pick up all the cost? Do we want to assess the property owners? What does council want to do? Fifty-fifty?
No, not fifty-fifty.
Not fifty-fifty? Do we consider that it's a public safety and that more than just the residents walk back and forth that street? So the percentage should be lower? Paul, why do you say no to fifty-fifty?
I think it should be higher, sixty percent.
Owner sixty?
I don't.
Carol has a question.
Why, what's the basis of the street director's recommendation at sixty or seventy percent plus covering? You know what that's based on?
I remember just in meeting with him that these were the numbers that he thought were reasonable, as it says here, "street director recommended reasonable range." I'm not necessarily sure what reasoning he was using. I just can't remember. Bujinka?
Okay, I think, two questions. Does a sidewalk increase the value of the property? I mean, seriously?
Yes.
I would say so.
Okay, because I was going to say, in a sense, putting in a sidewalk is not really a value to the person who lives there. It's a public value. It's so other people can walk up and down the street. So that's why I would lean towards saying that the city should bear more of the cost than the property owner.
Paul?
I would have to disagree. If you want a mud pond in front of your house, you just don't put a sidewalk in. You saw the pictures there where we have this little path of beaten mud. That doesn't help the value of the property. What I'm looking at here, these are basically businesses right here. These are all rental properties. You start adding up all the people, these are not little old ladies who are living on checks, social security checks, okay? These are little, these are little gentlemen who are actually pulling in, or men and women, I guess, of corporations.
Right, so they're rental properties.
They're rental properties. They're all rental properties. They're all, every student in there is being charged, what, three hundred a month, maybe?
Oh.
Okay, sorry, you name another.
I don't think anybody's getting by down there with less than five hundred per month per bedroom.
Okay, so you're talking about trying to charge them nine thousand dollars for the largest thing there. This can be written off their taxes. This can be written off their income. This can be written off their taxes, this can be written off their income.
You've made a persuasive argument.
Okay, I could go up to 100 percent as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, I'll leave it to you guys.
I'm assuming anything less than that might going to be doing.
Commercial properties differ from residential properties.
Carol has a question, please.
My other question has to do with 72 and 74. That the DeLuca property says it's 3 percent of the total property, and the floor is 13. Why is the DeLuca so small?
It's on the other side of the street, too, isn't it? It's even.
Is it that it doesn't start until partway past this front?
I don't get it, I just don't see why we're commingling that. Just give them an order to clean up those two sidewalks in 72, 74, and then we can go down to 63, 65, 53, 55, 57, 59, Stewart, all on the same side of the street. The others are repairing existing side.
These are repair.
Yeah. Zero on this.
We shouldn't pay any of repair.
Well.
No. Repair is up to the.
But it still is strange to me that, so the 3 percent represents how much of that property needs to be repaired, I take it? That it's not the whole thing, that it's part of.
No, but these are new sidewalks.
But not this one.
Oh, these two?
Yeah, they're coming.
Why are the other percentages two?
Well, could we decide for once and for all what our policy will be and then change it next time, but, I mean, could we have, so we don't have to say every time? We're thinking about a 50-50 split when it's a new sidewalk and 100 percent for the existing property owner, or a 60-40. I mean, we could use the street director's approach where they would pay 40, we would pay 60. I prefer 50-50 myself, but I'd be persuaded by whatever you say, that would be for Linda Dutcher and David Stantz only. I mean, what's a fair amount for building a new sidewalk? If you look at those properties, I don't see that these sidewalks as great improvements to their property.
Well, it's better than the mud holes.
Well, I agree, but I mean, I said, but it's still going, especially the ones at the end, they're going to be, they'll be less, they'll have less front yard.
Well, sure, I highly doubt that.
Somebody else wants to talk to us.
I highly doubt that a sidewalk in front of their, you know, property is, you know, students, if there's no sidewalk in front of the property, you're not going to rent there, no, you rent wherever you can find space to live.
It's close, and you can walk up there.
One from the audience family would.
Did I make a comment?
You've got to get close enough to the microphone.
Yeah, you might as well pull up to the chair.
Tell us who you are.
It's an interesting discussion, I feel forced to make a comment. We, my business partners and I own a property, and, excuse me, I have a touch of laryngitis, at 67 Stewart Street, which was the picture that had the new sidewalk installed. Has there been any effort on the part of council or the city to directly contact the owners directly and ask them on their own to install sidewalks at their own cost?
I believe when we first started, we did, that it was discussed that all ones that were not up to speed, we, in our first round, yes. Through code enforcement.
And your response from the majority of the property owners was?
That, well, the code enforcement said that most of the ones on your side of the street were up to speed and they were going to take care of, as I recall, the other ones.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, as you talk about, excuse me, value and the process and the effort and the time, in fact, whether, and I can't speak for other property owners, but I'm wondering whether it would be a positive issue to have that dialogue and see if the property owners would in fact make the investment on their own, eliminating the entire discussion that's going on. And I'm just wondering whether some of the specific individuals you've spoken about have been contacted and asked the question, would you just go ahead within this period of time and build the following sidewalk?
Paul?
I'm just asking the question, I'm wondering whether there might be a more favorable response than you might anticipate.
Okay. Actually, I thought last time this was brought up, Amy brought this up in the last November, maybe, I think it was?
Maybe even before that.
Yeah, we looked at this and we said, we're going to have to do all these specs and everything like that, and I think we asked the administration to actually kind of talk to them, you know, through Pearson or maybe through somebody in the administration, so we wouldn't have to go through all this. Because really, the whole thing is to make the specs, do a supermajority, do this, and go through the whole process was a little bit more than we wanted to do at the time, but as far as I know, we never got a response. Again, we're legislative, so I guess we could knock on their doors and find out, but we'd only get the status.
Well, I wanted to ask the question, because I'm just wondering whether there are, and again, I can't speak for anyone other than myself and my business partners, but the actual cost of putting in that sidewalk and getting that accomplished.
It's small.
It is not insignificant, but it is doable by the majority of people that are there, and I'm wondering whether there would be, and again, it's not, whether there is some form of embracing a community incentive of awarding people some good comments in the media about doing it that would encourage people to do it on their own. And I would just say one more time, it might be worth getting the list, putting one person in charge, making the call, and it very likely could be, I'm dreaming, but I would sense that it's, it may be a lot easier than forcing, discussing, you know, this percentage and how long this goes on, and it may happen that way.
I mean, just to conclude, we are trying to do the whole sidewalk in a uniform way on Grosvenor, and I think that that one will, is under plan right now. Those are all replacements. This is different because this involves a new sidewalk, I think, and I think that's the nature of the beast right now.
But, following Mr. Bloom's suggestion, it would, at least, there would be some economy of scale with us designing and building the sidewalk, if the property owners then wanted to pay that amount. It has to be less than what they would pay to have each piece done by themselves to our specifications, which it would need to be done in that manner. So, we're still back, in that case, maybe, to us building it and assessing them, but we would be doing it with their positive acquiescence.
I just, I have a question.
Pajinka?
Would it be, this is a question probably for you. Is it cheaper to have the city build it, or for, I'm serious, or to have, like, let's say, you've decided to build a sidewalk?
Well, the city would subcontract, most likely.
Right, but I'm just saying.
I mean, Ben Stolz was, does half of what the city has done, and he's given specs, and he does a fine job, and there is some economy in scale, the city isn't out pouring concrete. The city workers aren't, they contract.
Right, so in other words, it would be the same price if you contracted for it, or if the city, a private individual.
If five property owners have a sidewalk poured for them, there should be some economy.
Right.
Supposedly each one doing it on their own.
Exactly. Right, right, but I was just, I still.
So, if the city passed that economy of scale on to an individual owner who is willing to absorb the cost, is maybe what we're talking about there.
Yeah, I was thinking, if I owned the property, would I think, oh, the city's going to do it, it's going to cost me a whole lot more than if I contracted for it myself? That's my question.
Probably wind up costing you the same.
Okay, that was my question.
Other council members, Debbie?
I would really like to know if there are examples from other Ohio municipalities about this question, about construction of new sidewalks? Because if we're talking about creating some kind of policy of how we're going to handle this, if other cities are doing, you know, new construction of sidewalks and the property owners are paying 100 percent of the cost, then we don't need to get into all of this. We can look at a model of how other people are doing it.
Can I make one more comment? I'll go back and speak when I have an opportunity. I would further suggest that it would be wonderful if you have that model that applies equally throughout every neighborhood and every sidewalk in the city, regardless of its location, regardless of the residential mix.
Right.
And regardless of whether it's a business or, you know, a single-family owner. So, there would be consistency, once you develop that.
Paul, do you have something?
Rick, is it possible for you to talk, have somebody talk to the property owners?
We're down to two.
Right, what we were waiting on, what I told you in November, as soon as it got designed, it sounds like we're about at this point, then the next logical step to me was to write a letter saying what we're going to do and inviting them to a meeting. That's what we did on High Street, that's what we did on Lancaster Street.
Okay.
And you talk to them and find out if they're willing to bear the cost. I thought we would do this, the curb.
Yeah.
I don't have the package you've got, so I can answer questions.
I thought this came from Andy, so you got it first, I mean, I've seen.
No.
No, I had the meeting with Andy and Ray, so I don't know if the mayor got to see the specs, but also, as part of that email was that we would be having a public meeting with the property owners after this all was addressed, but I just want to stress again that I want this to keep moving forward and I don't want to stop on this project. So, let's decide something, please. Pajinka?
I was just, didn't want to lose this point of maybe equality for the both residential and commercial property owners. I'm not sure I believe that. I kind of think commercial property owners should have a different mix than residential. Just want to lay that out there. Otherwise, what's our next step? Looking up to see what other cities, how other cities handle it, or moving forward with it?
Well, that's what we should decide, that's what we need to decide, is if we want to look at other municipalities, as Debbie's suggesting, before we actually make a move on this, that way we can have some sort of precedent set for future sidewalk constructions, which will be coming up, you know, here in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
Well, they will be. Or whether or not we want to go ahead and do this one now, decide if we want to assess, and then maybe set a precedent after this project, or if we want to do the research prior, and then go from there. Paul?
A couple of things. In terms of where do we want to go with this, I would prefer have the mayor talk to the property owners first. I would point out that in the section of code that you gave us, the Higher Reapides Code 72701, page two, it tells you that you can actually assess three different ways. By percentage of tax value of the property assessed, A; B, portion of the benefits which may result from the improvement; C, the front foot of the property bounding and abutting the improvement. We're choosing C, of course, which is the linear foot of the front of the property. To create a policy that limits us to one or the other, or one of the three, I don't know if that's really where we want to go with that. I mean, I think we should be flexible in how we do this, whether that includes commercial or residential, because, again, Lincoln, from my point of view, was a high-traffic area, which did not really help the property owners, and we could have done assessments throughout the city, which is what we did when we ate the cost. In terms of footage, there's other occasions where you would want to do linear footage. In this case, I think that'd be more appropriate. But from my point of view, really, the first thing to do is get feedback from the property owners, let them know that this is coming down the pike, and if they don't respond in a timely manner, we go ahead with it.
Okay, so what if we say, two weeks from now, we'll do, I'll do some research with the help of others on other municipalities, see where they stand on this, we'll have the administration talk to the property owners, see where they stand on it, and then in two weeks, we can make a decision?
And we're only dealing with the one side of the street that doesn't have sidewalks, correct? Because the other one is simply a replacement.
Well, because that's, okay, then yes, that's what council wants. Jim?
But, there was a second part to your question, the other side is replacement, or is this going to be replaced within this same project, or?
It could be.
Well, it can be, and then we, what are you saying, you want to, because it's replacement, assess that 100 percent?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's what, okay.
But if we're going to clean up Stewart Street, then we ought to do the other side.
Yeah.
No, it's all going to be, this is all going to be.
The ones that are subnormal should all be brought up to normalcy.
Okay, so, everybody comfortable with that, then? Two weeks from now, okay. I'm going to skip over the next one just for a minute. Next, I'm on Agenda's, the Mulligan Slip. As you know, this happened as of last week over the holiday, and the administration has been working hard to get us some numbers put together, and as the mayor stated to me this afternoon, some stuff came in at 4:20 today, of which you all have a copy of, on the Mulligan Slip, it's with the cost estimate, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor to discuss the Mulligan Slip. Mayor?
One of the things I think I mentioned last week was that there's the traditional way of the slip, which is you build the retaining wall, and you spend probably 200-plus thousand dollars on this particular slip, and that's the way we've done it up on Joneswood and Columbia and some others. What our street director had found was the company that is using a couple of different methods, and so he had them come into town, look at it Saturday, because they're doing work in this area, they're in, I think, Afrin and Pittsburgh areas in the next three weeks, and they gave us a quote with, which includes an $8,000 contingency of $80,325. This is all based upon council passing a ordinance next week, obviating the bidding procedure and declaring a real and present danger to the residents around Mulligan Road, because nobody can use it. And we would just award it, they say it's a two-week duration of work to it, they describe the methodology of it. This is a, preparing an SNL wall soil nail launcher, and it is putting vertically installed at 20-degree angles, three rows at the three-foot centers, with 12-inch-thick reinforced concrete cap placed over it, certain type of soil for, if you read the second memo, I think, starting the second, or the second paragraph of that gets into some of the engineering specifications. Andy has a few more questions to it. We're thinking that, and I don't want to play light of this, but at least, this is a section of roadway, and on the downhill side of it is a residence garage, which is far away from the house. I don't think there's too much risk here, it is a different method than we've tried in Athens, but it's about close to a third of the cost of what we've been doing on this. And I think those of you who've been on council for a while have seen how we've spent 300-plus thousand dollars up at Sunnyside, 150 or 60 on Joneswood, and the list goes on.
Times are repeatedly.
I just have a question about if this is something that we haven't tried here, have they done this in areas with the soil types that we have here that have, you know, dealt with these very slip-prone soils that we have in our area, and then are you asking us to have a special session next week to get this done?
Well, it's whenever you want to do it, I mean, that's the same point, I forgot that next week is, I'm used to the council meeting following the committee meeting, but it's really in two weeks.
Suspension, okay.
And this price does, you know, leave us to do the asphalt, there is a guarantee There is a guarantee that they put into it.
Two years.
Were you catching that somewhere in the memo?
Last, last page in the memo.
Yeah.
We'll warranty design, workmanship, and materials up here in two years.
So, that lessens the risk, I guess. But as we, we have slips that, times, for example, I think it's been repaired three times since it was built.
Absolutely.
Move, the earth does move, and it's saturated with water and everything else, so.
Pajinka, did you have a question?
I was going to say, is this something that is not being fixed until we make a decision?
Right, I can't fix it.
We need money. We have to give them the money.
We want the checks. It's over $25,000.
Is there a way that we can expedite this?
Well, yeah, we do. We do suspension.
But I mean, it's still two more weeks.
We can meet next week.
Okay, okay. But they're going to come the second week in February.
They're not going to be here any sooner.
You just have to call 24-hour notice to the media, and you can have a meeting.
But your paper says that they're not going to start till the second week of February.
Right.
So there's expedited.
But I need.
It's expedited.
All right.
Right.
Okay, so then in two.
I need general consensus, or in the box to say, okay, do I?
Oh, well, I have council after.
We want to act on this in February, first of all.
Yeah, I don't think that we really have that much choice.
I have done some things when you have a.
We're going to have committee meetings.
A waterline blowout, and you have to bring it outside. You're going to spend more than 25, it's illegal, but I've done it before, and then go back to council and say, cover me.
Can we see if February 5th will work if we suspend? I mean, that's, it says second week in February, the second week.
I will be in Santa Fe on the 5th. I don't know that that matters, as long as you've got enough people, if you have to break, tie.
I'm going to disagree with each other.
No, I can't believe. If you've got enough people. We still have some questions, and we're still talking to this firm, and I can find out if council's adopting or not on the 5th, or the 4th, if we're meeting.
It's the 5th.
So you can, well, then you can find out for us soon enough, if we do need to call a special session, you will.
Then just call them. And otherwise, call a special session if we need to, otherwise, we'll do it on the 5th.
So the mayor will find out for us if the 5th is okay, if not, we'll call a special session, and we'll take care of it. Okay. All right, any, anything else on the Mulligans? Okay. Next item on our, on our agenda is the 24-hour parking ordinance. And you got in your boxes some information that Paul supplied us with, front pages proposed ordinance for the 24-hour parking. And Paul, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to speak to this issue.
Let me pack my little packet as well. Okay, essentially, I gave you a couple of different pieces of paper there. One being the original proposal I had in last November, where we suspended, and the ordinance following, which was always 13006. At that time, the discussion was, shall we suspend the 24-hour parking enforcement rule when OU session is off? I think at this point, we had said, let's give it a shot for the winter break. I haven't heard any real criticism of it. I don't know if any of you have. That's really what I was hoping, if anybody in the audience was jumping up and down and having a problem with it, that they would have come. Anybody got something to say about it? The, go ahead.
Before we, it happened, after we passed it, and while I was going through, I did hear some comments and some concerns. Those people's concerns seem to have relaxed, and I actually just did my own little straw survey of driving around town every day during the break to see if there were places that were solidly packed, and there were not. And of course, Congress is one of the worst places in the city, and it did not have a problem during break at all. So at least in the Christmas break, or the holiday break, I should say, there did not seem to be a problem with it.
Okay. The feedback I get is from mostly people who do not have off-street parking, so they're all in favor of it. That's the main noise you hear, approval of it. The other portion you've got is the OU calendar. I lifted off their website, cut and pasted the parts of when their sessions go in and out, starting from the start of this academic year. Their original intent of this was actually talking about, as I say, suspending it during when session's out. The question would be is, do we include summer session? We could actually, we could always just say, let's do it for the next spring break, which is the March 16th to 25th. Or we could just say, whenever school is out of session, and then, of course, you have to decide whether that includes or does not include summer session. Summer session at this point is starting at June 17th. There's two short ones, but one long one that goes all the way to 25th. So in other words, really, if we decide to say the summer session is a school session, really, the only times we'd have it would be for the winter break and spring break, I guess. Is that what, that's the way I interpret it, I guess. So I'm leaving it up to your choice on this. The other considerations that I, the only other feedback I got from this, and also the last page, of course, is the tentative calendar for the future years, which are kind of hard to read because they hadn't been read for the closing and opening days. The only other consideration I would look at this would be whether it affects, over time, we build up a storage parking bolus, or whatever you want to call it, or the fact that if we try accelerating street cleaning at any given time during break, that the cars that are being parked, they would get in the way. And I don't know if that's been happening or not. I know you sometimes run the street sweeper more during break.
Yes.
And this would be an impact that you would have to tell us about, I guess, if you think it's being a problem.
Well, we try to hit this primarily student area. I mean, Mill Street really only gets cleaned when it's on break. I mean, because otherwise, there's cars there all the time. Same thing with West State Street. So there are certain streets in town, yes, we schedule it, instead of running the sweeper three days a week, we try to do five. But if it's broken, it's broken. But otherwise, we do run it. And we try to hit those areas.
Would the storage parking, the way, if we say, suspend the 24-hour rule during when school is not in session, including the summertime, I guess, that's, that would be the extreme, would that be a problem, I guess, for the street sweeping, or any, or what other problems you think would occur?
Well, it's, if you do it all summer and the other breaks, then you have a full-time employee that's been devoted to that job that doesn't work 14, 16 weeks a year. I mean, that's, that's there.
Do you have other things that they can do, though?
Well, they have, they're a parking enforcement officer, that's all they can do, is parking enforcement. You know, you double up on the two-hour meters, and, you know, the handicapped or whatever. That's what we did over, over break, is that person didn't go out and make those rounds. But with also free parking on Court Street, and all you're doing is the two-hour, and it's also a traditional time for people to take vacations, that we had surplus of labor some of those weeks, yes.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to imagine why we couldn't make that person more flexible, you know, sidewalk inspection, or something like that, I mean.
It's a union position.
I know, it's a union, that's why, I'm just trying to think of how we can work around this, but I guess you can't.
Well, I think one of my questions on the 24-hour parking rule, as I've been exposed to it, and having different friends live throughout the city in different places, I'm confused about the enforcement of the 24-hour parking, and where it's enforced. There are some streets where it is, and some streets where it's not. So I think that that needs to be established, too, because I know it's very confusing if you are consistently parking your car, you know, for 48, 72 hours at a time, and then, you know, sporadically, you get a ticket because they decide to patrol that street that day. I mean, I know very many streets that are not patrolled for the 24-hour parking. So I think that also leads to some confusion on this actual rule that we have for parking.
Well, I think it's in effect in the whole city, and if they don't patrol every street every day, then those people just got lucky.
But this isn't just, okay.
Same thing with stop signs.
But this isn't just any street every day. I mean, this is, I know someone who parks their car on the street for days at a time and doesn't get anything, and hasn't for the year that she's lived there.
We can tell.
I'm not going to tell you what street it is.
The reality is, I'll have to hire more officers if you want every street ridden. Because, I mean, you're talking 100 miles a street, and you can't stop and chock tires and do 100 miles in a week with one person.
But this street is never patrolled, is what I'm saying.
There are streets like that in town. Nope, question, but it is done on a complaint basis. If somebody else in the neighborhood calls, that's part of what we call neighborhood feuds, especially in the area of the street that has one car parked on it, and it's the same person all the time, and the neighbor's mad at them, and they call it in, and we have to enforce it.
So what's on this?
But I guess part of my question, Andy, is parking a problem on that street?
I sometimes can't find a spot. And I can't see if it's yellow or blue or what it is.
Columbia.
No, it's not Columbia. No parking on that street anywhere.
It's kind of harsh.
But there's off-street parking, so it's not a big deal.
What are we doing with this?
We're saying, good job, do it again next Christmas, that's what I'm saying.
What about spring break?
I'm for it, I mean, that's a week time.
Yeah, why not?
Okay, suppose, suppose we are talking about when school is not in session, but the session, our definition of session also includes the summer sessions. So really, what we're talking about is four times a year. That would be winter break, spring break, between the end of spring quarter and the start of summer quarter, and the end of summer quarter, and the start of fall quarter. So we're talking about only like a week. If you look at the numbers there, days, we're talking about, let's see, November 21st to January, which we just went through, March 16th to 25th, which is coming up, then at that point, from June 9th to 17th, and then from 25th of August to, I assume, August 1st, 31st, I guess. So this would be very minimal.
But this move-in and move-out time's part of the time, and there's lots of garbage around and on the streets, especially the ones in the summer, those are the two peak periods. And I would really be adverse to doing that, because I think that people could go off and say, well, I'm all moved in, I'm going to leave my car and go home with my friends, and they could cause a nuisance for everyone else. And you have to go back and ask your neighbors who have, who suffered through pre-24, and they'll jump up and down about how bad it was when people would stay on their street for a week at a time. And the car loses its coolant, and it, tires go flat, and the car is still there.
Okay, so your recommendation is what, just the spring break, or just the winter break?
Christmas for now, and I think spring is too short, people go to Florida, leave their car all the time, we have a snowstorm, I just can't see, what's the city's interest in this? I don't know what it is. I mean, we have an employee, the mayor's already talked about the employee. I mean, we're at a, we're in a position where we've done one good thing, just like free parking uptown, and, anyway, so I'm the only one person, so somebody else can hop in and tell me I'm full of it, but.
I'm, you know, I'm indifferent either way, I mean, I have a driveway.
I'm also indifferent either way. I understand what you're saying in terms of, you know, spring break, a lot of people do go away if there's a snowstorm.
Or streets need to be swept, or.
Jim?
All of those conditions apply to all of the breaks we're talking about. Winter break?
As well.
We could have the same snowstorm, we have street sweepers, we have, et cetera. I still think having a vehicle in this, in the city is a responsibility, and we have, we've passed this ordinance to, to force people to take responsibility for that. It's working pretty well, and I think these little chunks of time taken out only confuse the issue for, for the neighborhoods, for the parkers, for, for the administration assigning personnel. That's what I said before, and I.
I know, okay.
I would, if, there are people for whom it's a real hardship to move their car, if there's, you know, an elderly person, and there's no off-street parking, I'd much rather see, and there, them have the ability to go to the administration and get some special hang tag or something, you know, that, not, just a special little thing. And I think that we do make accommodation for people that have a real hardship and can't deal with that. And, you know, I'd rather deal with a particular reason that somebody can't comply with our existing law.
So would that require an ordinance to do a special needs?
I don't think so.
Hang tag?
They're doing it, I think, or they use some handicap.
Handicap, but that's a little different.
Yeah, I know, I.
From elderly.
We never, I don't think we authorized it, but it's been done for decades. Where you designate a spot as a handicap spot in the neighborhood.
So wait, are you, you can go to the administration and request?
Well, I couldn't do, yeah. I mean, I think, you just see, they shift around. Couple of my neighbors said, have them remove that one on Grove, near the person died five years ago. You know, and that happens.
There's one on First, yeah.
There was one by, on Schaefer Street. I know.
Okay.
I've got people here.
I know, they're probably getting their ears full.
Okay, that's kind of interesting.
So, what I'm hearing is that you don't want to renew this or try for spring break, nor try for winter break? Is that what I'm hearing from everybody, or should we just put it up and see if it votes up or down?
I like the Christmas present idea.
You like the Christmas?
But not all the little times during the year, I think it's confusing.
Okay, we have plenty of time to revisit by Christmas.
Right.
Okay.
Did you catch it from me?
All right, well, okay, well, we're not done, we have one miscellaneous for transportation. If council, is that it for the 24-hour? Can we move on? I'm going to pass this around, this is a map of the top of the parking garage, if you remember.
I think there's more I want to copy there.
Yeah, there's enough, wait, it's all the same thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's enough everyone to have, except for president and clerks. I know.
We're taking one, and you may not get one.
I already have one.
Oh.
If you remember, it was just discussed in committee some time ago about putting some equipment, Verizon, putting some equipment on the top of our garage. If you'll see, there is a map of the equipment, I think that we calculated taking up six and a half, which would be seven parking spots on the top of the garage. So I'm going to go ahead and let the mayor talk to us about this.
This is a, part of the requirements that we had, and council talked about, was that it not conflict with the Sprint Tower that's up there. And so this is a change from what we discussed in committee, I think, last time it was five parking spaces and what's called a moon pole. This creates a slightly different, it takes up seven parking spaces. I also wanted to point out in the lower left-hand, the South Tower building elevation. You look on the left, it's 94 feet from ground level to the top of the light pole, the lighting that's there. This new tower would go up 106 inches, so it'd be a little over a foot higher than what you could see from the south elevation right now.
Okay.
And is that noticeable enough or not? And it does. Bowled off seven parking spaces. But that's the design parameters of what would be used, they're all on the very top deck of the parking garage, it still leaves 14 parking spaces there. Our lease with Horizon, which is Sprint's leasing company, I think, is $16,000-some dollars per year. I think we gave up two parking spaces, and on the top of the elevator shaft, and one of the staircase areas. So it's slightly, so I would be asking for slightly more money than 16, probably with the normal escalator clauses that we have for inflationary factors. We haven't got that part of the deal done yet, but we have to decide first, is this acceptable space-wise and aesthetic-wise to council? And I need, and I know that you're going to run out there right now and try to vision something that's one foot taller than the light pole that's at top of it.
So you're talking about the upper level here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that'll be, how many spaces, 14 spaces left on the upper level?
On the upper level, all of the down level would still be, be there.
How often do we get to capacity lately? Have we gotten in the parking garage? At all?
What, the big weekends?
Sometimes on the big weekends, we will get to capacity. It might happen less than, less than a handful of times a year. I'm interested to see, and I haven't gotten any reports back, like when the Templeton Blackman has 2,000 people, and attracts a lot of community interest, how filled is our parking garage versus now that the Baker Center parking garage is open? And I haven't really gotten any feedback on that, yet, but I'm asking for it, so it's possible, but it's rare. And I think what part of our idea was, if we could get somewhere in the $35,000 to $40,000 total from our leases, that would, once we get the bill paid for, because we're down, I think, to $350,000 on the 1.4 million worth of improvements we did a few years ago, then that would, in essence, stabilize our uptown parking rate, because we wouldn't have any need to increase the parking fees within the garage, because we'd have that flow of money coming in to help maintain what's there now. And it's like, I think, this next weekend, it's, I can't remember, I think that's when it's going, we're grabbing, somebody come in with community service workers and go through and pick up all the litter and all the other stuff. And then twice a year, we have the power roasters out, and like spring break is one of the times we usually try to clean the parking garage, get all the salt and all that kind of stuff off, hopefully from the wintertime. So that's one of the weeks that we usually do it, and we usually try to do it in late August also.
Okay.
Any other questions for the mayor, or anything?
I have no problem with this all in all, I mean, but, you know, it's up to everybody else.
Yeah, I, again, don't have a problem with, I know when we discussed it before, I just, my only concern was the location, that it would just be kind of off in the corner, which it is. So, so we'll bring it up, then. All right. Anything from miscellaneous? No, okay, and then.
Planning and Development Committee.
Two on the break, please.
We've got several folks here to talk to us about different things, so we'll start with those items. Herald Square subdivision. We have a recommendation from the planning commission, you want to let us know?
Let me hear or over there?
Either one is fine, as long as people can hear you on the mics.
You try here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You've all put in a long night, you've still got work to do, I'll try to be as brief as I can, at least until my voice is gone. We are here to share with you our plans for the Herald Square subdivision. As you know, we had previously obtained approval for this development in a different design, which was 41 apartments originally, at this location at an earlier date. A combination of. at this location at an earlier date. A combination of factors caused us to reevaluate this site for what we feel is a more appropriate use. At the time the apartment project was accepted, a portion of this neighborhood was perhaps the most blighted inside of the city limits. A trailer park was located adjacent to this property with seriously deteriorating mobile homes with substandard living conditions. Um, after the events of the flooding in this area, the damage caused to the mobile homes created even worsened living and health conditions for the residents. And as you all know, ultimately condemnation of the entire mobile home park took place. The effect of this change in the adjacent property really led us to reevaluate the use of our property. And because of the proximity of this site to many city amenities, including the West State Recreational Facilities, Oblenus Hospital, the Bike Path, the Ohio University Campus, we determined that a development comprised of attached housing, targeting an affordable price range, was an appropriate development concept, and this became the basis of our current plan. Excuse me for boring you, we have some statistics, but our multiple listing service just published these from 2006, and I think they're interesting. In 2006, 234 out of 386 listed properties sold inside the city of Athens. The average price of, selling price of those properties was $147,000. 62.4% of the sales that occurred in the Athens city market took place from $150,000 or less. We felt that designing a community to address this price range made good sense. The plan that we have, now, do you have access to plans? Do you have anything in front of you at all?
Just a memorandum.
Yep.
It's a memory of variants.
Bruce, do you want to give them, got a little bit of information?
Don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but I don't have a laptop, so that'll be a problem.
Bruce, why don't you bring it up here and everybody can gather around?
That would be great.
Well, Jim, I hope so, if I wish, maybe. So, okay? Nothing.
Does the Planning Commission ask how we... We usually get that when we get down.
Bruce, you got the colored, um, site plan out that may be the rendering?
I'll grab my stuff, if that's all right with you.
Okay. That's very cozy. Thank you. Okay. Okay. The plan is that of a 16-lot subdivision to be developed with multifamily buildings. There are four three-unit buildings and two two-unit buildings. The entire development utilizes available city infrastructure, with the exception of, obviously, we have new sewer line to install, but there is sewer access right there. And the city water lines exist both on Herald and on Blick. Uh, there will not be any building, any new roads or streets. Excuse me. Fee simple ownership will allow individual owners to take title to single residential units, which they can purchase with conventional financing. While the plan is in fact labeled a subdivision, it imitates many aspects of a planned unit development. But because the property encompasses about 1.13 acres, the PUD designation does not apply as it does, because the property needs to exceed two acres for that purpose. Pardon me? Correct. You are correct. The plans that have come through the Planning Commission show, um, again, which would be more similar to a PUD than a subdivision, the placement of all the buildings, the installation of all sewer and water facilities. We do have a tree plan there, and we're in continual and constant conversation with the Tree Commission, the sidewalks and the driveways and the parking areas. Um, what we're trying to do is give a clear sense of the entire development with what we are submitting, which again is more typical of a PUD than a subdivision, which would simply show you the lots that we're proposing to develop. Um, we actually have designed a floor plan with, Bruce has got elevations. Um, I'm gonna continue talking while he's pulling that out. The living units will be oriented, do you have the, um, the, uh, rendering?
I get the rendering.
Go through that.
These, these front elevations face each other.
Face, face the interior. The living units will be oriented inward to provide a sense of community, looking into a, a substantial green space. The double garages of each unit will face Herald and Blick, and all driveways exist for parking clear of the 40-foot city right-of-way.
So, so this, this elevation faces inward to this park-like area here. No cars. Um, accessible, the buildings are accessible, um, between the buildings, sidewalks.
We've yellowed in the sidewalk areas, which will bring pedestrian and owner traffic around to the front entrance.
And this would, this would actually be the elevation toward Herald and Blick, with two-car garages. And, um, since we're in the flood plain, um, the, the garages are not applicable. Um, so we've stepped, we've staggered the building in such a way that entry is above flood plain, and then, um, the, um, it basically steps back and forth and every, we, um, so in other words, this is, I mean, this, this is very specific information for a traditional subdivision, because technically...
These are the buildings that are gonna be built.
You're gonna be looking at what building's being built, but this is ultimately, this is the plan built.
Okay. Um, I see you have a whole boatload of variances necessary for this.
Great. I'm just, that's the segue into my next paragraph. Thank you for asking. And then I'll be most happy to answer specific questions. While the number of variance requests appear numerous, they further indicate the level of completeness the plans offer as far as what Herald Square will be as built. The lot variances address what we consider the complexities of developing attached housing within the framework of a subdivision. So the majority of variances paid, on the first page, one through six, deal primarily with, um, ratios of the lots. They deal with set, uh, side setback issues predominantly, and that again is a direct function of the intention to build a multifamily setting versus coming here and saying, here's a subdivision, and when, when and if it's approved, when we leave, we'll determine what goes on each lot. This is specifically what will be going on each lot. These are the footprints of the, of the properties, and in order to fit those properties on those lots appropriately finished, those variances are a direct result.
And the driveways are gonna be on the city right-of-way?
The driveways...
Well, actually, access to parking.
Here, here's the 40-foot city right-of-way, and we'd like to point out how Herald fits so nicely on the right-of-way itself.
So actually, the, the parking is on the property. Access to the parking driveway goes.
Yeah, you have to drive from the street to the property, which is this narrowed area.
So there's a constriction there.
The driveway itself.
For parking, but that's completely off the right-of-way.
Driveway itself, which is wider.
And then these driveways are considerably longer because of the, which is the sort of direction the Herald takes. That's all city right-of-way.
Right. And, and let me address the two variances other than the front six that you're looking at. There's a stacked parking variance request. The other is, we're in a B3 zone, so we need a variance to build residential property on grade. That's second variance. Uh, the stacked parking variance related to allowing parking off the city right-of-way. In the driveway shown, in the event the units are leased, and leasing is a possibility in the event of two factors. Excuse me. In order to sustain enough development of the site, initiate the installation of infrastructure, and numerous buildings, there is a possibility, we believe the subdivision will need to show some sense of completion to create interest in this location. It's an unproven residential development location, to say the least. Along the way of creating this community, it would be beneficial to allow, we think, to allow non-owner occupancy, to allow the project to continue towards completion in the event sales or market conditions indicate. We may want to build a building, let's be very specific. Let's say we start here, and, and our first attempt, and, and I'm not going to be specific and say we're gonna build this first, or we're gonna go in and do the whole thing. But our concern is, we come in, we build the first couple of buildings, uh, in the event the market is not accepting this location for owner occupants immediately, because people have more of a wait-and-see. We want to see...
The value of this project is the completion of the project, is this, is this environment created. Um, it's less, well, ultimately, that's what will, will be the nicest part of it.
How many bedrooms for a unit?
There are two-bedroom units.
Two bedrooms.
There are two-bedroom units, but what we would like to be able to do, obviously, is say, okay, we want to keep moving. We'd like to be able to lease those units. And furthermore, if an owner is to purchase, and I want to, um, uh, remind you, our attempt here is to stay in the price range that we consider, unfortunately, what is now becoming more entry-level price range in our market than it used to be. You know, we may have a buyer profile that determines that they're, you know, in med school or grad or PhD, not necessarily a PhD student, but they may determine they want to purchase the property, stay here. They may want to keep it and sell it and rent it, and we want to have the option for them to be able to do so. And we think it's attractive from the marketing side that people have the option to do that, provided that we have adequate parking available for leasing to take place off of the city right-of-way from day one. You know, we're showing you what our plans are.
And these do have two-car garages?
On, on the, yeah, excuse me. On the other side of that, if that project is accepted with, uh, from day one with incredible gusto, and they sell immediately to owner occupants from day one, our intention is to build the project and, and sell this to, uh, single-family owners.
I'm confused. We have two-bedroom units there, why would, and a two-car garage, why do you require a stacked, a variance for stacking?
There's adequate square footage inside of the floor plan. Why don't you show it for three residents to live in? So we want to have the ability to have a rental permit issued in the event that we determine that we want to rent those spots. And if you had three people living in there, you need three cars, and you have a double garage, and you're gonna have to put another car elsewhere. And there's nowhere else on this property to create additional parking, unless we invade the common space, which is the entire reason for turning the buildings inside. There's more than a, yeah, both of them are larger than 120 square feet.
There you could put four in there.
We've already had the capacity to go into that site and build 41 apartment units, which we determined was...
Were approved.
Were approved, and we determined not to build that, uh, for whatever...
How many units now, total?
16. 16 houses.
That are two units?
No, 16 houses.
16 individual houses.
With 32 beds.
With 32 beds.
Yeah, 16 houses.
That is correct.
I got it.
That is correct.
I think you used the word unit before, and I got confused about whether there were multiple units inside.
Each, singular living unit will be on its own lot.
Okay.
Able to be conveyed independently through title to an owner.
With shared building, like this, don't you have some kind of, how do you, you guys the same thing?
Westfield.
Westfield, yeah.
East Meadow, Woodmere.
It's, um...
Okay, so that's not a problem.
No, 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 they'll be, there will ultimately be some deed restrictions to be attached to this, which we'll provide to you before we, you know, before you get to, get to the end of the road with this. But the, um, the multifamily experience is what's going to happen here. And the fact that it is multifamily development is part of the rationale for being able to create homes in the price range we're attempting to do so. Because there's an economy of scale, just like building sidewalks.
And I have a question about the memo from the Planning Commission.
Okay.
There's a list of necessary variances, and then there, the other variances related to the ability to possibly rent these, are...
Well, one is, one, the, the stacked parking is the only variance that I think refers directly to rental. The second variance, if I'm not mistaken...
Is residential on the ground floor?
Is it's a B3 zone.
But all of these variances are recommended by the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure by the wording.
There was some confusion when they were sending the memo to you as it came from the Planning Commission to council. And they all, the, the first time they shipped the memo, there was some confusion. They just had the first page. But all of those were approved by the Planning Commission.
Were a part, okay.
And all part of the vote from the Planning Commission.
And that allows us to be able to get the footage.
So you're gonna have to...
No, it's, um, engineering laws, yes, we've done some...
So the PUD, you kind of...
I understand.
So where...
Oh, okay. Right. That's correct, and R3 is only by R1, R3.
Okay. Anyone at home watching, seeing complete completion, if we could get back to, uh...
Okay.
Would you like us to go back to the table?
If you would.
Very good.
Thank you, Donald.
Okay.
This would be the filling, this would be the filling, but...
Because a lot of the questions that I'm sure people, the mayor was answering, that I'm sure people would have questions, I'm sorry, go over that again.
The Planning Commission has a copy of the plans?
Yes.
That, um, will be sent up and be on the table in the council office? Okay, so if anybody needs to take a look at what we were looking at just now, that will be in the council office. Um, some of the questions, I don't know if people were able to hear all of that as we were gathered around looking at the plans. Um, this is, the current proposal is 16 units, which is a real reduction in density from the, the already approved, uh, planned unit development. Um, there were some questions about some of the variances that have been recommended by the Planning Commission. When it was approved as a planned unit development, um, the residential was allowed on the first floor without calling it a variance, even though it is, because a planned unit development serves as an overlay to whatever the existing base zoning is. Um, so that's that one. Um, and the question about stacked parking would currently, um, if they're owned, the, the amount of parking that's provided in these plans is, is perfectly adequate, but if they would be rented, they would have, that would have to be allowed. I don't know if there were other questions that came up in our discussion that people may not have heard where we were on that. Well, members of council, any other questions or comments about this? Bojinka? Okay, I'm just curious. Was the original apartment complex for students? I'm just curious. Was the original apartment complex for students, and now it's kind of shifted to a different demographic?
The original, the intention of the original apartment development was to provide primarily single, with, our, our first development scheme, so to speak...
Yeah.
Was to provide, single, there, there was a mixture of two-bedroom, predominantly single-bedroom, and a couple of efficiencies. And our goal was, because of the location... And our goal was, because of the location, to seek potentially, as a market, med students, engineering students, single professionals, who are looking for a car, for rental.
Yeah.
So I really can't answer your question, was it specifically driven for one sector? It was, it was just a different form of what the other available inventory of what we own in our rental business. We thought this product was something that, we noticed there was a great interest in. But we always had reservations from day one about the development of that site because of the nature of the adjacent property that existed at that time. Once that began to change, and in fact, and correct me if I'm wrong, the permit for the mobile home park was taken, was revoked or terminated. And it was, for those of you who never had the opportunity to view that, that was pretty, pretty rugged. And when that changed, then we said, let's reevaluate this property inside the city of Athens with proximity, and do something different.
Paul?
Two questions. One is, you mentioned the price range, are you talking about 150 or less?
Our target is to be around 150.
Okay.
That's our target. Now, you know, we'd like to come in less, and we hope we don't have to go more.
And there are still mobile homes there. Are you telling me those are going to be vacated?
I can't address exactly what is going to happen with the remainder of that property. I do know at one point, there was, I believe there is, there's one, there's one that still remains down there. And there was some indication that property was going to be for sale, though we've never seen it. But it's an oddly configured triangle of property below the floodplain, completely covered by high-tensioned power lines over it. So I would suggest, ultimately, in the not-too-distant future, that would be a fringe buffer area between this property and the fairgrounds.
Okay.
One of the things that I don't see on there as a variance, and I'm curious about, and I'm going to want to check about, is the amount of the road frontage that is driveway, then? I think that we have some specs about driveway widths and relationship to the rest of the lot. I just want to look and double-check that, because I don't think that we have, we don't have clearly spelled-out design standards about the, you know, the road frontage facade of projects, but I don't think we have anything in town that is a wall of garage doors fronting on the street.
Sure. Well, they specifically would be the lot, and there are lots there that are 20 feet wide. So, yeah, so for each specific lot, it's the ratio of the access to the parking versus the width of the lot. And on that drawing, in our later discussion with the tree commission, that has been evolutionary throughout the process, the last contact we had, they suggested, not only the tree plan that existed, that they would be interested in waiving the concern about planting trees on the right-of-way, about planting on the right-of-way, so that, in fact, not only, so there would be trees planted...
In between those driveways?
In between, about four significant trees on both sides. And we've been in discussions with them about the species and the type of trees that would be appropriate in there. But that was one of their recommendations.
Anything else? Okay, Paul, I didn't see you. Sorry.
Well, okay. So rather than go with apartments, you're going with this, but this requires a slew of variances. Why not just say, keep it as business section, B3? Or why not, you know, say, you know, full-width lots? I mean, just off the top, I mean...
I'm sorry, why not just keep it as B3?
Yes.
In other words, just leave it down there as B3?
Develop as B3. I mean...
For the purpose of...
Business? Isn't that what a B3 zone is?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Why not keep it as a B3 zone and have us develop it as a commercial or business site?
That's not what we do. I mean, we build houses, and we see a need for this type of housing, and we actually are just about complete with a slightly more, well, very much more world, but a very similar project that's been incredibly successful. So we're really pretty good at it, and we just thought this was a perfect opportunity to do a lot of positive things, certainly for us, but also for the area.
We had, I do want to respond to that. We did have, I had an inquiry after we bought the property by someone who wanted to purchase it, put a transmission facility there. And that may have even been before or concurrent to the well-had issues. From the get-go, when we purchased the property, even though it was B3, our intention was to do, as Bruce has indicated, and that was, provide some form of housing, because that's , that is the business that we're in. You had a second part to that question.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so houses, why do we need 20-foot width lots? Why not 40-foot, why not standard lots? I mean, why should we give you the variance, I guess, is the question? Any of these variances?
By creating, by creating those variances, number one, in giving the variances, you are accepting a plan that is very specific, as opposed to creating variances for the purpose of a subdivision which could yield a plethora of different styles, floor plans, buildings, without any consistency whatsoever. Those variances are a component to creating a singular, complete, consistent community to be built.
Well, our experience has been that this type of housing has been really popular. And the density that we're talking about allows us, the economy of scale, to be able to offer these things at a price where somebody can afford them, as opposed to putting, splitting it up into four house lots and putting in $300,000 houses down there.
And actually, that's a good point. If you were to build, and I can't remark specifically dollar amount, but if you were to put one house on one lot, the reality of bringing that to market at the price point that we're attempting to do will be impossible. And that's a reality. That's a reality.
Okay.
We have a lot of other things on our agenda tonight. I think that the plans will be in council office, people have a chance to look at those. I'm going to have a question for the law director about the exact status of approving a subdivision with the idea that it's more like a planned unit development. Like, I don't know what the status of these elevations and unit drawings are.
This is strictly a subdivision. This has been, through the planning commission, from day one, it was indicated as a subdivision.
Right.
And my reference to it imitating a PUD is, in the sense that we are attempting to provide all that information, so you see...
This documentation is actually more for us, so we know what we can build there. It wasn't an attempt as a legal document to technically show what we're building, it's so we know that we can build it. That's what it was generated.
Right, I understand that. I guess we need to know all the implications of, you know, if all these variances are granted, what else might be able to happen there that may or may not be appropriate for in the city? So is there any way to say that this rather extensive request for variances is actually tied to a particular plan that you're pitching to us? So...
We have absolutely no problem with that.
Sure.
Right. So I would just want to, you know, see if we can make some connection between all of these variances to what you're showing us that you're talking about.
Okay, that's fine. And if we can provide additional information, or you need us...
We're available.
You just need to contact us, and we can provide any other documentation, or information, or plans, or whatever you need. And can I ask a question regarding the process? Since this is committee, then, once you go on that fact-finding mission and bring that back to council, will it then be, once you discuss that, does that become first reading? I'm just wondering what the process is.
I think during the period that we go through the readings, there's plenty of time for us to get answers. We will have a regular council meeting on the 5th. I think we could get that information from Gary before then.
So first reading on the 5th?
I think we could be at first reading on the 5th, and have some kind of answer from Gary.
Okay, great. That's good.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
If you're going to ask Gary, ask him what the definition of subdivision is. I mean, what's making this subdivision? In fact, you've taken lots, in theory, four normal lots, divided up into 16, and therefore now it becomes a subdivision, because it's over five lots. I'm a little bit confused when it, when it...
Paul, the original planted lots that existed there?
How many?
When we purchased it, we purchased 10 existing lots with a decaying, dilapidated house, and an additional parcel afterwards from an adjacent neighbor.
And they were standard-sized lots?
There were 11 lots that were approximately 38, they were about 38 feet in frontage.
So they're non...
And there was an alley that existed right down the middle, in the back, where you're seeing that green sanitary sewer line coming down there.
So they were non-conforming lots that would have to be put together to make a conforming lot?
We vacated the lots, and believe me, the auditor and the treasurer are thrilled about this. We vacated the lots, the PUD was voted on and approved, we determined we were not going to build the project, so now we are requesting to replat with 16 lots. So it's as enjoyable for us as it is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. This we need you here for. Then I'll let you go. Okay, the floodplain intern that I've talked about several times, we are, there are several things going on that make this very timely. I'm proposing that we, that council hire an intern to help us look at higher standards in our floodplain regulations, and help us prepare for map modernization, and help get the city enrolled in the community rating system. Right now, everyone who lives in the flood hazard area is required to have insurance, have flood insurance. And there is a system that communities can enroll in, and you get points for different things, like education in your community about how to minimize the financial impact and the danger from flooding, from having higher standards regarding floodplain development and management. There are a variety of ways that, as a community, we can earn points in that system. And then ultimately, as we get enough points, people will actually get a discount on their flood insurance. So this is something that our natural hazard mitigation plan actually has in it, in the timeline, that we should be looking at our floodplain regulations and considering higher standards, because flooding is the greatest natural hazard risk that we face in Athens, with a significant potential for financial damages throughout the city. So there's a, the handout that I sent around was kind of the justification for the internship, which was actually drafted by Elaine Getz, who's interested in helping us with this work. She's met with Bob Eichenberg, and also attended the session when we had folks from ODNR come down and present to us about the map modernization process, and about higher standards for floodplain regulations.
Could you translate higher standards for me for a moment? It's late.
There's a whole list of possible higher standards that some communities have adopted. We have one right now where we have a free board, where people have to build a foot above the 100-year floodplain level. There are other higher standards that can be included, like not building critical facilities in the floodplain, the no net gain and fill in the flood hazard area. There are a variety of things that we've discussed, and the folks from ODNR did put together a presentation and make some recommendations about which ones would be fairly easy for us to implement quickly. So we have a copy of that PowerPoint presentation. Part of the intern's job would be to pull together the people who would need to be involved in the drafting of this, which would include some representatives of the business community, the county planner, our floodplain manager. So there would, a part of it would be a convening role, and just helping with the work of getting, you know, really looking at what we can do.
Does that mean 50-year floodplain and 25-year floodplain? That's really the question, I guess I would say. I mean, those are in the mix for consideration, controlling those two?
I think that this would be, anything that that task force would propose would come through council. So I think that there are a variety of things that could be proposed.
That's, I was just trying to figure out what you exactly meant by that.
Yeah.
So we're talking about tightening it up rather than loosening it up? And we're talking only about the city?
Right. We're talking only about the city.
But you mentioned Bob Eichenberg.
He has, I think, relevant expertise, and it makes sense to coordinate with him.
Couple of years ago, when this system was first gaining strength, I talked to both Mr. Eichenberg and Mr. Pearson, who's our floodplain administrator, and they both said that they would like to work together, but they needed an intern or a person to coordinate a lot of the paperwork. So I guess my question is just, once more, we're just talking about a city intern now.
Right. And if the county wants to, you know, join in and be part of this, I think they can...
Come up with something.
Yeah, I mean, I think that as, with the natural hazard mitigation planning, the task force included city and county people looking at the natural hazards and how we deal with them. So we do have to coordinate. But this is, this is us dealing with our...
I understand, we're coordinating for our benefit, not necessarily into the county.
Yep.
I do know there were some concerns over this position, the legislative administration. You met with Rick, and has that been worked out?
We talked about it a while ago, and haven't recently. Just seems like it, with the communication that we had from FEMA about map modernization, that it's really time to get it rolling. So wherever the interns housed, I...
Where were you determined to house? You house them in council's legislative, if you house them in the administration's administrative? I mean, the role can be the same. It's not that we don't present potential legislation to council, you know, from time to time.
So either way...
We just have to decide, who do you want to have direct? If you're having a council, or the council administrator, then it's legislative intern.
Well, that...
Its purpose is to develop legislation for council to pass.
The only concern I would have, having a legislative, is, you know, the difficulties that I find in providing any real, overtime oversight of government channel, council clerk and others, and having them fall under...
She's perfect, don't say anything.
Yeah, fortunately she is, and I don't have to, but...
Tells you where to go.
Yeah, she tells me what I need to do, when I need to do it, and they seem to work things out well. But, you know, if we're different, where does the oversight come from? I guess is the only thing I would say. I like to think many times that I would have more time to do those kinds of things, but I don't. We are very part-time people, we are check writers, decision-makers, we're being stalked. But anyway, that's the only concern. I, if we were having, I'm not hearing the... I'm not hearing that we have major concerns with the administration over this. Don't tell me my mic is out.
That's no, that was Gary Hunter's.
Oh, okay.
He's taking command.
Okay. I have no objection to it if there is enough money for it, if it can do what you wish, if you've worked out with the administration the concerns that I had heard several months ago, and it sounds like you have, do it twice.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back to my question. Does this include the university land or no? Because that's the main issue. Because I think ODNR and the university tango together, and we're not involved...
Is that within the city limits?
Well, I don't know. I think that's an important question.
It's probably something the task force should discuss. I don't know where we are as far as having jurisdiction there.
We don't.
We don't.
ODNR...
ODNR says they have jurisdiction because it's a state-owned...
We started saying we did, and then they went to the... And why did ODNR go?
I think we do what we can to, you know, minimize the potential impact of flooding and try to help protect citizens and minimize the potential damages.
Sheriff in Columbus now.
What?
What's one of the first issues to look at is will this program, because ODNR directly ministers the university properties and government-owned lands, will we still be able to qualify for any of this? Because it's a significant amount of the floodplain and the 100-year floodplain that's in university ownership.
Can we make sure we have the answer to that?
Well, that could be an early task, would be to really just assess, is this something that is even feasible for us to do?
Yeah.
For the rating system. Definitely, map modernization is going to be happening. And anything that we can do to have information available and ready for that process, I think, we'll be in a better position, so. Okay? Try to iron out some of the kinks and bring this forward, please? Great. Thanks.
And I think that there's a public administration class that's hoping to work with this, right? Isn't yours on FEMA? Yeah?
Oh, yeah, we're doing a... There's a proj... We can do a project on...
Just an aside, I thought it was.
Okay. I have more handouts for people for the next thing. We'll get a talk to Elaine, see if she needs to steal a few maps. Site plan review. This is coming up now for a couple reasons. One of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan is that we put in place site plan review for any projects, any development that's coming through the city other than 1, 2, or 3 family residential dwellings and accessory buildings. One of the reasons that this jumped to the forefront for me, and we can't deal with it now, but was the question that was raised about condos in the plains and what their relation is to subdivisions and all of that. So I spent some time over the last couple of days reviewing city ordinances around planning and zoning and subdivisions and condos and all of that. And there are different ways that these things are organized, but it is within keeping with what a lot of cities do in Ohio to have a site plan review process. It can be located within the subdivision regulations, and I'm proposing that we take what our consultants gave us and bring this into our subdivision regs, and we check with Gary about exactly where it should be located, whether it goes up front after the jurisdiction and those things are laid out, but just basically saying that there should be site plan review. And then we would also need to specifically add some definitions of condominiums and where they fit into this. Nancy passed around one possibility. I brought but didn't copy three other possibilities that are from cities in Ohio that just define what a condominium is, that it's just a form of ownership, and that the site development review does apply to all condominium proposals. So obviously, this doesn't deal with anything that has already come through, but it has come to my attention that, you know, there's kind of a gap in our current regulations.
Okay.
So what do people think?
Sounds like a good idea.
The site plan review language, this is just printed out directly from the comprehensive plan. So we'll have to get it to the law director's office and into the proper format to fit into the code. Lochenko?
I'm just reading this now as you just handed it out. Now, basically, it's a form of public review.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it says it's not an opportunity to object, but rather to look at the site considerations. I was just going to say, does that mean, in a sense, approval of the site considerations? I mean, in terms of, you know, a proposed development, a public review of the site?
It would bring it through the public planning process.
Transparency.
Right. But in other words, we say public... Does this mean a public meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Around any proposed development?
Right.
Okay. Now...
Except for 1, 2, and 3 family residential dwellings.
Right. Okay.
On their own lots.
Okay. Not an opportunity to object. I mean, then this would have to be facilitated carefully. I guess I'm just interested in this language when it says not an...
That introductory kind of language.
Obviously, some people would object. I mean, if you have a public meeting, it seems to me people would be able to make comments. So I guess... I will read this more carefully, but I just wondered if you had a sense of whether this should be facilitated? I mean, if people objected, would there be a process for it?
That descriptive introductory language from the plan explaining what site plan review is wouldn't be part of the code. If we bring this in, it will lay out a process, like we have a process for subdivisions and for planned unit developments.
Right.
That will create more public input into proposals that come forward, that wouldn't currently come through our public process.
Right. Okay.
Debbie?
Yep.
How does this vary from the planning commission's process of PUDs and subdivisions? I mean, this is... It sounds like this covering a gap that's, you know... I would explain it. Basically, you're saying the exemptions are with single-family and to 3-family houses, but then the next step up for us right now is PUDs, right? And the next step after that is subdivisions. So how does this vary? It sounds like it's closer to a more specific viewing of a PUD, in other words, looking at all the traffic, all the other outside activities or impacts of this development in its context. Is that what I'm seeing? So this is... This fits the gap between it? Is that what I'm hearing? Or is this just another way of getting a public view at it?
It's something that I think exists in a number of cities, and it does provide more public input into development proposals.
Okay.
It would have people looking at questions about curb cuts and landscaping and traffic and all of that.
And who would run it and organize it, the process?
The planner.
The planner? What's happening with the planner?
Applications are available.
It's being advertised now, right?
Again?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. So if we had a planner...
We only had a planner.
One of the jobs that the planner would do.
Carol?
Will we see this in a form as it would go in the code and compared to, you know, how it fits in terms of changes before it appears at a council meeting, is what I'm saying?
I think we should.
So would... I would like to see another committee meeting where we've got that in hand and we have time to study it in that form.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's a big step, and we should look at it carefully, but it's one of the things that was clearly recommended. And I remember at least one planning commission member speaking out really vocally about the need for this, so.
I would like to suggest that we at least consider using 1 and 2 family exemption, 3 family, the classical Mill Street apartment that's being built and expanded, to include that in site plan review.
Okay.
At least preliminarily, because I remember Hogemeyer people saying, well, if you had site plan review, that wouldn't be there. You know, the post that's out there, that's not... Where it's not really covering the lot because there's parking underneath it, but, you know, those places that probably... Well, I don't know. Many of us, at least I, look at them and say, how could that have been permitted? You know, like 25 people living on a 40 by 100-foot lot. And their panacea was this, and I'm not sure quite how it works, but we'll see. I mean, we have to have more discussion on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I will work on getting Gary's office to look at this, get it into the format, and make some comparisons to the current subdivision and PUD process, to see how those things line up. Okay? And on the condominiums, I think we bring that through at the same time when we get there, because then they would fall in. They... The question that came up before the planning commission was whether the planning commission and the city had the authority to review a condominium proposal. And it... Under Ohio law, it's not defined as a subdivision. It's a different form of ownership. So we would have to, if we want to review them, we'd have to address it specifically and say that that's a site that we review. So a loophole that I think we can address. And then Nancy had a couple other things under subdivisions that's on her handout.
Yes. And so I went to Wikipedia, and they said a condominium or a condo is a form of housing tenure, and it's a legal term used in the U.S. and Canada for joint ownership of real property. So I thought to remedy our situation, so we don't have anything that's the slight bit confusing. I was thinking either of those two, and that was before I knew Debbie had already done her part of it, but in about 210109, whether we do the site plan or not, all rules of density usage placing in zoning and subdivision regulations apply to all modes of ownership, including commonhold and/or condominium, because commonhold is a new word that sometimes they use. And so that means that if you make a condominium, you can't be exempted from the rules in place for that. And so now Debbie's already put it on the back burner, doggone it. So here we are with number two. All land divisions covered under blank, and that would be 290302B, that included variance shall include... I was scurrying at that time because I took too many pictures. Shall include notification of all abutting property owners, and we should take input concerning said variances at a public meeting. I don't know exactly how that should be said. Another way would be a variance is defined by and limited to those cases, and... Oh, that's the definition for variance. Pardon me. All right. So this is what I will call the example we had where the citizens came up to us and said, how come we weren't notified when we're abutting this property? And so this would be one way to do it. When you have a variance, when it comes to us, then we will notify abutting property owners. That's a possibility, a possible change. I don't know what you feel about this. This is one that Debbie's not going to bring under her umbrella.
Well, I have a comment, because there's a... I believe what I live in is a townhouse area.
Mm-hmm.
Which I didn't realize has some common areas, but not all... So I was going to say, if that may be another... I don't know if it's a legal definition or what, but it's another form of semi-condo development that if you're defining them, you may want to include that in there.
Yeah, it's be simple absolute, right? You own the building, but the land is retained in the ownership of the people.
No.
The land is owned jointly.
You own your lot.
Mm-hmm.
You own your driveway and your land, but you don't own some other part.
It fixed this.
We're talking about... We're back to number one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one is more just a response to the citizens of the South Side about all land divisions covered under 210302B. That included variance will include notification of property owners and statement of when at a public meeting they could give input, you know, so they don't find out after it's been done and the house is going up in their backyard. And I have to say, I was a little bit... And I left some words out there because I was rushing at the... Between my two classes to do it, but that's basically what I was trying to get at. We need... And I tried calling Gary, and I'm sure he thought I was going to talk to him about the Ethics Commission, and I wasn't. I was going to ask him about this. And so... And plus, he had some own... His own issues to deal with. But I need to send it by Gary and come back with another example at the meeting with better language, with all the words there. That would be nice, right?
For number two.
Number two. Number three, and this is also in Oakmont. This is the Oakmont thing. In section 210302, relationship to other laws, that's the severability, that part of the code that says, if it's more restrictive, the more restrictive is in place. An area designated as a subdivision, whether phased or not, shall be considered a parcel not available to the minor subdivision or land division process outside of the specific subdivision process. So right in the midst of an existing subdivision platted Oakmont, we're not... We're going to specifically disallow the formation of separate lots. And we're going to say orderly process, that's the subdivision process, requires that all parts be considered in this orderly process. Once again, that goes back to the Oakmont example. Or law splits and minor subdivisions are not allowed inside an area designated as a phased subdivision. Instead, the orderly process spelled out by this ordinance for a platted subdivision shall be used. I mean, I think it's sort of self-evident, but it still is, we don't want any more lots kind of on the edges of Phase 1, as we found in Oakmont.
And there was supposed to be a lot, an order tower, that's not available?
No, I don't know. I can't remember.
Wasn't needed.
It's complicated. I don't know. But I do think that, you know, that the lots are supposed to have a number, they're supposed to be in an orderly fashion. If we're talking about platted orderly growth, then this is one thing that I think we should consider. Once again, I... Since Gary's not talking about... I didn't get a chance to talk to him. I will send this to him and see what he says.
Okay. I have no problem with number one, the all rules of density sentence.
Mm-hmm.
With going ahead and bringing that forward.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's going to take us a little longer to look at the site plan review. If people feel like that will deal with the question of condominiums, to just say that the form of ownership doesn't matter, if it would fall under these rules.
Hmm. Okay. Let's bring it back in one more time, see a look at it, get his... Send... I'll send a copy to the planning commission simultaneously, see what they have to say, ask for feedback, and then we'll see it again, okay? Is that a deal? Just want you to know, I'm going to let the monkeys out and not have my meeting.
You're not going to have your meeting?
No, I'm too tired.
Okay. So if Nancy's not going to have her meeting, then we have a miscellaneous item.
Okay.
Which would be the water issue with Tupper's Plains and Woda, which was on Nancy's agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So there... You should have a bunch of papers about that.
I would prefer to do it in my meeting, but in a meeting between now and the next time, maybe next Monday, okay? The Woda thing? Just have another meeting? That's what I was thinking. We were going to just meet next Monday or Saturday time and go over it?
Well...
Because I didn't finish my part of it yet.
Oh, you didn't?
Remember, I showed you the one ordinance that I was working on. Again, I needed to talk to Gary.
Right.
Because this is the agreement. I wanted to look at the ordinance that was on top of the agreement, and I don't have that yet.
I guess I'd like to get a general sense of this, because if we might be having a special session next week to deal with the slip.
Morgan?
I want to see if this is moving in the right direction. So I'd like to touch base with people about this.
So what are the changes?
What do you mean, the right direction?
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Okay. Addressing concerns. So Nancy took the proposed development agreement and made changes that would take the reference...
Proposed negotiating points. That's what Gary said. Okay, I'll just take it over since you're going to do it anyway. I'll just do it, damn it.
Thanks.
Okay. So the first thing I did on page two under the development agreement, just looking at it.
You crossed out.
I crossed out all of those wheresses because, you know, I was just getting annoyed with all of those. And then I went on and said, water and sewer rate, and they can put them back in.
So you have two things.
Yeah. This is the one we're looking at.
There's a development agreement with a lot of strike-through on the front page?
Because we're not done with the second one.
I only have one thing.
What's the other thing you're holding up there?
What's the other thing?
The other thing is...
We don't have the other thing.
We don't have the other thing.
Well, we don't need it, because we don't have an ordinance to go on top of it in order to reference it.
Okay, that's this one right here. That's from 118.
And I again have to talk to Gary on that one.
This one, standby emergency water service?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's the agreement, that's not the ordinance that goes on top of.
Right.
True.
And that's what I was trying to get help on, so that's why it's kind of pointless to go through it, but let's do it anyway. Okay, so the first thing, page two, 20% is the cost for outside, this, we're on page two, my first thing was, "Water and sewer services shall be governed by the same rules and regulations which govern said service to residents of the city, and that rate charged for said service shall be the city rate," this is, Debbie made it much more complex than my language, that's probably why it's more correct, 20% until such time as the area is annexed.
I've got 10%.
I have 10%.
I know, but we increased it to 20%.
All right, no.
I'm just wondering why it's-
So why are we looking at this, then?
Yeah, well, just change the number.
We're fixing it.
Okay, and then the next on F, "Water service issues with the Tupper's Plain Chester Water District will be covered by ordinance O blank O7," so that's the ordinance that still is not written. Yeah, so we're not going to have anything in this agreement that deals with the ordinance. "H. City will allow existing right-of-way required by the developer for," you know, we're going, allow, I just like that word better, you can say, "Oh, she's picky." D on the third page, "Inasmuch as the developer is receiving a substantial benefit of release from Tupper's Plain's Water District, the developer will pay the city water fund 120 times 250, or you can say 500, a tap fee for emergency coverage. The emergency water service covered by ordinance O blah blah O7 will be limited to the 120 residents in the Stringtown tank area as noted in the testimony before council. Additional emergency water must be contracted for under the principles that we have there." Once again, this isn't an attempt to tighten it up, because it seemed awfully, we spent too much flailing around with this, and I guess I'm looking at it and saying, "If I were a risk manager, I would not send water through the lines that are contaminated. I would put the water, as they do with hazardous waste spills, in a truck, truck it down, pump it into the tower, and use it." I mean, that's the way you would do it. I mean, it doesn't make any sense, I don't think anybody's who was involved early, like the people down in WODA, I mean, did they know that you would do this? This would be the way you would solve any problem with water contamination, this is the classical way of dealing it. But if they're going to send it through their two-inch pipes, okay.
Don't wait, I'm sorry, are you saying, pardon me, that if Tupper Plains water had a problem and they needed emergency water, it would be foolish to pipe it through the same pipes?
Well, that's my judgment.
That's your judgment?
Right, I would say that the best way to deal with that prob, I mean, you know, what I'm figuring happened, they just said, "Oh, well, okay, if you want out of our jurisdiction, then what you should do is get them to connect with us in case we have a problem in the future." Well, I don't know if I have a problem with that or not, but I'm just trying to respond as, you know, what I think the city's interests are as I see it, and I'm only one of seven, and you can all say, "You are full of it." But the tap fee is in there, and you can consider that, we've got time, because I don't have an ordinance to place on the other one. But I do think it's a little bit dangerous not to have some portion of the tap fee provided by WODA, not by the Water District, because, and I meant to check it, but I just ran out of time because I was taking pictures, I would like to have WODA pay some variance, some part of the cost. We said, we found the backflow valve, if we use that, if they use that, will have to be replaced, we're going to have some costs associated with this appurtenance that are above and beyond the sale of water to WODA. WODA gets a deal because it's a bigger facility, I mean, it taps into our water system, it taps into our sewer system, what a good deal, and I'd like to propose that we ask them, since they are getting a benefit, to pay part of the tap fee for the Stringtown facility. Installations shall be covered by ordinance, which will have that agreement attached, is there. There are some more words there, the fire chief thing. Easements necessary for implementation of an emergency connections is addressed by ordinance would be in 007, general terms, and there were some things that I had said, but, you know, the main question here is, do we or do we not want a tap fee? And I guess that's basically it. And are we going to ask for WODA to pay some costs, some cost to doing business in order to get this connection made? And as Bojinka said, it's my judgment that if you were doing this, you wouldn't run the water through a two-inch line, you'd get a pumper truck and take it down to fill your, fill your water tower, surplus water, but, you know, how do you do it is the question? Yeah, Amy?
You see, on the, on part D on page three, where it says the developer will pay the city water fund 120 by 250?
That was, I was just trying to say a portion of the tap fee.
So, okay, I just-
So they're paying, you know, they have a piece of property that they spent money on, it doesn't have the infrastructure, and so, you know, it's kind of a trade-off. And if we do any more connections, I think we should ask for those as well, because-
You said 120 by 250 or 500?
No, I was trying to say, times 250, which would be a fourth of the tap fee, or you could do $100 of the tap fee, but still ask for some amount of money, and, or 500, which would be half of the tap fee, which is about 1,000.
Oh, I see, I, okay.
Yeah, I was doing the math, and Debbie probably could have figured-
I thought you were saying 120 by 250.
Oh, I know, that would be a terrible mishandling of arithmetic, wouldn't it?
I was just a little concerned with your numbers there.
Yeah, I know, I don't blame you.
So were they not planning to pay a fee for this initially, anyway?
WODA was planning to, expecting, I believe, to pay the tap fee for their project.
Right.
This is an attempt, if we're-
Oh, for string?
If we're considering making this connection to provide emergency water to Tupper's Plains, actually charging a tap fee for those houses that then would have access to city water.
And I would also note that Carol said last time, and she's right, 120, I mean, who's to say it will stop there? Okay, so it's surplus water, but I remember a few years ago, people saying the surplus water was, some of it was, you know, there were leak issues and so on, so maybe it won't even be there, but who knows? But I think that, you know, there's, there is some quid pro quo that has to happen. I mean, I know we're all just really good people, but the citizens of Athens have an interest. We've developed this system, it's in good shape, it doesn't have any threats that I know of, except maybe a little bit of salt here and there and a few other things to it, and I think it's time, you know, we, and I know sharing is wonderful, but sharing probably would be better accomplished in a truck rather than the bad lines. I mean, that's the way the-
How much does a water truck cost?
I don't know, if we ever have another hazardous waste spill, we'll find out, because that's what they were going to do, close down the water facility, clean up the waste, but meanwhile, use a truck from outside.
Lots of trucks.
Lots of trucks, but I mean, that's the way you do it, you don't, you wouldn't run it through the same line, it doesn't make any sense.
The two-inch line.
Yeah, a two-inch line.
Okay, since we're talking about the money, it was, it finds us any, that WODA pays, but somebody also pays for the installation of the line and the backflow device.
Or whatever we use.
Right, and the idea that if the backflow device needed to be replaced, you're suggesting that that be included in the agreement over time?
And I think it is. The agreement is a separate document that-
Right.
I think the mayor sent up to us?
Right.
A draft agreement?
Right.
And what you're working on is the ordinance that this will be attached to.
Mm-hmm.
So people do have that to review.
Right.
My only question about the agreement is, should it specifically talk about backflow prevention?
Yeah, it does, it's, the language is out of date from what we talked about last week already, because they're talking about interconnections and backflow, and they were even amenable to having two separate lines that weren't even connected, so, I mean, I think there are a couple of things we need to decide, and just because they fooled around for two months, not really listening to us, doesn't mean, you know, I don't feel any real compulsion to heat it up. I mean, I'll have three meetings that, we're going to have a terrible February, folks, I hope you know that, what with training and all the reports from all our outside people. So, so there are two questions, let's just get some feedback on it, at least from my committee, I know sometimes you guys do it and exclude the rest of us, so, but I'll just take feedback from all of you. What do you think about the question of, they have their obligations to us, they pay 20% until they come into the city, but how about a token fee for tap, for the limited amount of space that they are talking about? Fair is fair.
You're talking about that 120 by-
Yes, that's, that's the only thing I'm talking about first, I have a couple of other things.
Okay, so that would be 30,000.
Or it could be 15, it could be 12,000, but it should be, you know, so that if we have the same thing in the future, there is.
I think the question was asked early on, isn't there a fee for this? When we defined it, we changed the definition from interconnection to a tap fee, the question was, well, is there a tap fee? So I, since this is designed to do something more than a regular tap fee, then it's probably going to be chargeable.
Because we're going to have to keep tabs on it, and there's some costs associated with it, and-
And if we have to go out there and unlock the whatever.
And this will, anybody who's definitely opposed to a tap fee, a minimal, some sort of token amount from WODA, not from the Water District. Now, the question is, should it be, if, I don't see, I hear brains rattling, nobody saying no, no, no adamantly. Okay, so then the next question is, should we ask them for 10%? Should we ask them for 20%? I should have actually started up above and gone down in the mode of the sidewalks. Should we have asked them for 50%? That's probably too high. You know, what should we ask them for? 10?
What did they agree to?
Well, I know, I mean, they're, that's the point.
20% is $200 each.
Mm-hmm, and they said it was limited to Stringtown, but of course, there's got to be a pipe going the other direction, so, you know, who knows?
Are we actually going to be servicing, we're not going to be servicing Stringtown.
We're going to be filling up the tank.
We, yeah.
If we have excess water and they request it-
Only the excess.
Yeah, and if they choose, if they want to buy it and we have excess water, that's my understanding.
They asked us for this, we didn't go out looking for this little thorny problem, did we?
No, but that's my understanding.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused, a tap fee is to WODA or is it to Stringtown?
It is, WODA pays for the privilege of this interconnect.
20%.
You say 20%?
No, I'm just asking a question.
No, I suggested 50, 30.
I could go for 20. Now, they're also paying for other, they're paying for their own tap fee, they're paying for-
That's a cost of doing business.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying that they are paying other fees.
I have no problem with any percentage.
Well, let's have it more zeroed down, come on, 20. Aren't you glad you started this, Debbie?
I say 20.
What do you think, Jim?
I'm the finance man.
I had figured it, I thought, I figured it as a 5%.
That's 50%. Okay.
Well, that's a negotiating point, then.
50% then.
That's what Gary said. We'll send some thing back on that. I think that we can always amend, if people don't like it, they could amend it. There are some, some things about this that are a little bit odd, and this will kind of get them out into the open. And other than that, I think most of it is pretty straightforward, and I was just being kind of, I didn't, I thought the whole, the whole tenor of this development agreement was a little bit wordy, I guess by a wordsmith, somebody, and we, I did shape it up, but I don't have to keep it this way, but we could send it off to them and see what they think, and tell them my legal fees will follow.
And then on the agreement for the emergency water service, we want the word emergency tap instead of the word interconnect, and we want it to specifically say backflow prevention?
Somewhere, yes.
Explicitly, yes. All right, and that's what I was trying to do.
Device, so that it could, it could include the backflow valve, or it could include that physical separation.
Well, which would you prefer?
Or it could be a truck.
Well, I think the truck is the solution, I don't think they really even thought about it.
You don't have enough trucks in the county. I don't, I don't know which is better.
Physical separation, does anyone have a strong feeling the black, backflow valve is a piece of technology?
The thing is, if there's an emergency and the extra piece of pipe gets put in, and then it's there, and we're providing water, we want backflow prevention, right?
So, right.
According to this development agreement you have with the purveyor versus customer, which I assume is Tupper's Plains, it says basically, we would, there would be emergency requests, and we'd have to, we'd turn on the water within eight hours, and eight hours after the emergency ceased, we turn off the water.
Right.
Yeah, Nick Carr talked about that last time, I think he looked pretty clear on it, how it would work.
Since we're being wild, this truck idea, how much is a water truck?